Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, November 3, 2009. We'll open today with the flag salute being led by our county council, Mr. Tony LaBouf.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tony. Ann, would you please read the meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, November 3, 2009. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pages and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now's the time for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board on any item that's not on the agenda, would you please come forward and read like your name and address, and I'll allot you three minutes. Seeing none, I will close public comment. We'll move to the consent agenda.
Oh, why do I always skip that? I don't know. It's right there. Yeah, it's right there. We'll go to the supervisors committee reports, and I'll start to my left with Jennifer. Tim?
Robert?
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to commend the supervisor with incredible courage.
Showing up.
Last week, he had, he was brave enough to bet me on the Placer High, Lincoln High School football game, and the deal is we're going to go to a restaurant for lunch of my choice.
The winner's choice.
Yes, the winner's choice. Thank you. And of course, he lost, but it was so courageous of him to actually enter into that bet in the first place.
And show up.
As a result of the mighty zebras prevailing, so I look forward to lunch, but I just couldn't pass up the opportunity to commend Jen.
Wouldn't it be the fighting zebras?
Fighting zebras instead of fighting Irish. If I may, I'm officiating at that. It was terrible, and I don't know if anybody else noticed, but all the referees were running around with striped shirts.
You gotta pull a muscle, you stretch that far.
Kirk?
Yes, I do have a committee report. At our South Placer Regional Transportation Authority meeting on Wednesday of last week, the board voted to designate Placer County as the lead agency on our Tier Two analysis for the parkways. So our staff will be taking lead in the actual on-the-ground disturbance analysis and alignment and all those fun things. So it was a good meeting and a good step forward in our Tier Two process and actually identifying where a future roadway will go.
Good job. That it? All right, now we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move approval consent. I'm sorry.
Yes. Mr. Chair, if we could have Item 17A, 1 and 2, that's Page 125 of your agenda, pulled from the consent agenda. It is an item that pertains to the reassignment process that your board entered into sometime last spring, and the intent behind that was to avoid layoffs of county employees. So we're asking your board to reconfirm that same program. It's on your agenda as a result of a grievance, and this is mediation, that we would put this on your agenda, and I believe that a person in the audience may want to speak to this.
So you want Item 17A, 1 and 2 removed for discussion as opposed to removed for action today?
That is correct.
Okay. Then with removal of 17A, 1 and 2, move approval, remainder consent?
Second. Roll call.
Euler?
Aye.
Wykan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm? Yes. I'll take up 17A, 1 and 2. Person here who wants to discuss this?
Ann Baker, currently with the Placer County, at least so far employed with Placer County. Once again, current circumstances have compelled me to speak before your board. Today, you were being requested to take action on a question that has truly been haunting me for over six months now. Since I was informed that I was to be reassigned last May, I have questioned whether your board gave the top county executives the authority to reassign initially and ultimately lay me off in June, since I am a county manager and not PPEO staff. The ordinance that you have before you today would apply to classified managers and confidential staff, expanding those staff considered for reassignment beyond the union members. Specifically, however, it only applies to me, retroactively, I might add, since I am the only member of this group that has been reassigned. First and foremost, I have been concerned that the correct county procedures had not been followed. I have reviewed staff reports and board-approved ordinances and listened to video recordings of board meetings for evidence of your board's action to reassign, lay off classified managers and confidential staff, and have come up empty-handed. Clearly, the union agreement specifically identified a process for reassignment and layoff, just as clearly I fail to see where this was discussed in meetings or open session that might have provided an opportunity for input by those affected, the classified managers and confidential staff. Throughout discussions with the county executive's office during meetings held in January and February, there was no mention of reassignment and layoff. At the board hearing in February concerning concessions proposed by management and confidential staff, there was no mention of reassignment and layoff. In the ordinance approved by your board in May 2009, there is no mention of reassignment, nor was there ever a distinction made between the treatment of classified managers and confidential staff and the treatment of at-will managers. They also believed that if your confidential staff were understanding that you were expected to take action on an ordinance today, that would open the door for their reassignment and layoff, they would be shocked, just as I was when I reassigned, when I received that reassignment email. Again, unlike the PPEO agreement where this concept was discussed, there was no similar discussions with managers and confidential staff. According to your staff from the county executive's office, county council, and personnel department, the sentence contained on Page 3 of the staff report dated April 21 implicitly provided the board's authority for the reassignment layoff of confidential managers, or classified managers and confidential staff. That sentence stated, "In addition to the union-represented employees, compensation adjustments for managers, confidential, and unclassified employees are also recommended by this action," which was followed by a list of actions that included reassignment. Honestly, I'm fluent in English and fail to see how this sentence provides the authority for reassignment layoff of classified managers and confidential staff. It states managers, confidential, and unclassified employees. That would imply that classified managers, confidential staff, and at-will managers are not treated separately. Also, the list was a mix of actions applying only to PPEO staff, actions only applying to management and confidential staff, and actions applying to all groups. How was the reader to distinguish what actions applied to what group? Clearly, the staff report was quite ambiguous at best. The ordinance approved that you approved in May, however, was quite clear in its intent: a reduction in the general wage increase, a limitation on vacation cash-out, and an increase in vacation accruals. Mandatory days off were addressed by a separate resolution. Again, there was no mention of reassignment and layoff.
Can you wrap that up, please?
Yes, certainly. At any point, I am the only one who has been identified for reassignment in the managers. I have failed to be able to find why. I am probably the most experienced staff you have in the planning department, and yet I have been targeted, and they tell me that there is no work, and yet, in my position at the planning department, they've had to put somebody else in that place because it was a necessary job. Again, I appreciate your time today, and like I said, I'm just kind of looking for answers. I appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony? Yeah, I'll thank Ms. Baker for her comments, as the board is reminded that this was a matter that has been extensively discussed over the many months. Your county executive officer went into multiple meetings with confidential and management employees who were all invited to those meetings to discuss this issue. There's a difference of agreement between this individual and the county that resulted in a grievance. This is a resolution of the grievance. I would recommend to the board just take the testimony that was provided and move on. The action still needs to be acted upon. Kirk?
Chairman, I move approval of the action requested in our agenda, Page 233, Items 1 and 2, both the confirmation of provisions of the Placer County Work Reassignment Program as well as the approval of the attached resolution.
Second. Roll call.
Euler?
Aye.
Wykan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm?
Yes. And now we're going to close session. Now we will adjourn to closed session, and we will be back before 9:30 to start the actual meeting. The board will go into closed session to take up the items on Page 3.
Welcome to the meeting of the Placer County.
Item 11, there's several litigation matters, there's a matter for redevelopment agency and property negotiations, and labor discussions. While in closed session, the board will adjourn as the board of supervisors and convene as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency board in order to take up the real property negotiations. We'll be back soon.
We will reconvene from closed session and our counsel will report out.
The Board returns from closed session, taking up the items that were on Page 3, Item 11 with regards to Item 1A Sutter County. The Board received a report on the trial court's decision in behalf of the county where the county successfully defended the challenge to the Placer Vineyards project. Item B with a discussion of a pending PERS litigation matter involving county employees before the PERS board. Item C, the Board received a report with regards to working compensation matter and gave direction to the risk manager regarding that matter. The Board also received a report with regards to the Deputy Sheriff's Association filing a PERS charge against the county of Placer. And finally, with regards to numerous bankruptcy matters that the county has an interest in, the Board extended the outside contract for outside counsel Martha Romero from a current amount of $20,000 to $70,000 to be spent over the next several years, hopefully slowly, on those matters. While in closed session, the Board adjourned as the Board of Supervisors and convened as the redevelopment agency and discussed with its real property negotiators the items listed in the agenda. The Board concluded that discussion, adjourned as the redevelopment agency and reconvened as the Placer County Board of Supervisors. The Board has yet to take up labor discussions which will take place later today, and that closes this report.
Thank you, Tony.
Mr. Chair, if I could just qualify the, or make a comment, the bankruptcy proceedings were relative to private properties going into bankruptcy.
I was thinking the same thing when he said that it was not the county.
Thank you. That important, the county's interest in private bankruptcy.
Thank you for pointing that out. All right, we'll take up the 9:30 item. District Attorney Brad Finocchio is going to make a presentation for the Prosecutor of the Year award. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity once again. I'm pleased to inform you that the Placer County District Attorney's Office has selected Suzanne Gazaniga and Dave Tillman as the 2008 co-recipients of the Prosecutor of the Year Award in memory of Anne-Marie Bourgeois. Suzanne is a Del Oro graduate and Dave graduated from Colfax High School. Before Suzanne became a prosecutor, she distinguished herself at UCLA as a member of the women's crew team for four years as a most outstanding senior oarswoman and as a marching band member. She received the UCLA Chancellor's Marshall Award in 1987. Suzanne joined the Placer County District Attorney's Office in 1996. Quickly, she established herself as a hardworking and dedicated prosecutor. She began by handling routine misdemeanor cases, and she was quickly, quickly recognized by the felony team members as someone who should handle far more substantive criminal cases. Suzanne's focus, drive, and intellect moved her quickly from the felony team into one of the most difficult areas of prosecution, that of child sexual assault. In that role, she established rapport with child victims and guided them and their families through the delicate trial preparation that's involved in these cases and through the even more difficult process of surviving the emotional trauma of the trial itself. Suzanne also handled family protection cases, to include elder abuse. She authored our elder abuse prosecution grant, and she was instrumental in developing our community and agency multidisciplinary elder team. In 2005, Attorney General Bill Lockyer presented Suzanne with the Attorney General's Distinguished Service Award for Prosecution of Elder Abuse Crimes. That was a statewide award. Suzanne has been an active board member with the California District Attorneys Association, a member of the Placer County Bar Association Board of Directors, a peer court mentor attorney, and a peer court judge. She was the 2004 Placer County Prosecutor of the Year, and she's developed a curriculum with the California District Attorneys Association and the University of California Davis Medical Training Center to teach medical evidence. She's also post-certified as an instructor, and she's instructed in the areas of domestic violence, medical evidence, cross-examination, elder abuse, crimes against persons, and crimes against property. Dave Tillman is a highly respected member of our office as well as by his adversaries outside the office. His background and his accomplishments speak for themselves. In 1994, he graduated from law school with great distinction. While in law school, he worked on the Pacific Law Journal as a comments staff writer and legislative staff writer. He received Dean's honors in all academic years. He gained membership to the Robert J. Traynor Honor Society in 1994 as well as to the Order of the Coif. He received the American Jurisprudence Award for the Study of Remedies in 1993. Dave Tillman has prosecuted criminal cases in Placer County since August of 1994. In court, he displays a quiet confidence and an ease which I attribute to his remarkable case preparation as well as to his naturally pleasant demeanor. Yet, regardless, he will vigorously fight for the cause of justice. Since law school, he's given of his talents to his community. He's acted as a judge for the Placer County Peer Court, has an attorney coach for the Rockland High School mock trial team, and is a coach-coordinator for the Placer Hills Youth Soccer Team, and has been a director, treasurer, vice president, and president of the Placer County Bar Association. His growth in the office has matched the expectations revealed through his prior academic achievements. For many years, he would remain on-call on weekends to answer questions and assist narcotics officers regarding search warrants. He was responsible for the felony narcotics case charging and prosecution. He once assisted the district attorney, myself, at a community meeting where citizens were concerned in the Newcastle area regarding Proposition 215 and AB 420 when they discovered that the owner of a medicinal marijuana dispensary was about to fence his property with cyclone fencing and razor was about to fence his property with cyclone fencing and razor wire. Dave was recognized in 2006 by the California Narcotics Officers Association with an award for Regional Prosecutor of the Year for Central California. These two remarkable attorneys were recognized at the California District Attorneys Association Summer Conference this last, last June as statewide prosecutors of the year. They, along with Dan Gong, Tom Beatty, Cliff Gesner, Jerry Johnson, Noah Bromland, and many, many others, were responsible for the conviction of a former sheriff's officer who killed his wife in 1997. On September 5, 2006, that defendant was indicted and charged with murder. The trial of this case would involve the precise presentation of meticulous minor detail and circumstantial evidence, 26-years-old. Suzanne Gazaniga and Dave Tillman commenced trial of this complicated case on October 6, 2008. They worked long hours through the holidays. Often, I would see Suzanne's husband bring in a pizza with her daughter so that they could at least share dinner during a long evening, and I would look over at Dave's light on the other side of the building, and I could see that it was on well past closing time. I know they worked weekends and nights, and they put in the effort it takes to win a case this complicated and this difficult. On January 27, 2009, the jury convicted the murderer for the crime that he'd committed and for which he'd avoided punishment for 26 years. Suzanne Gazaniga and Dave Tillman patiently, masterfully, and boldly brought their unique skills, intellects, and sheer courtroom mastery together to reach back in time and to hold accountable someone who had sought to escape justice. Their efforts positively impacted their community. They displayed the very best of what prosecutors are capable of doing, and they brought peace to the spirit of a young mother whose life so long ago was extinguished by the merciless hand of her controlling and vengeful husband. I'm very pleased that these two individuals are being recognized today. I'm going to invite them forward.
This is kind of the way it went in court. We were like, "You go. No, you go. You go." No, I would, I would just like to say a few words. It is, it is a very humbling honor to, to win this award. First of all, because it was, it comes from our office. It was a nomination from all the deputy dis, deputy district attorneys in our office. So, it, it is humbling, and it's a true honor to be recognized by our peers. So, that's, that's the first thing I want to say. Second thing is, is this was a very difficult case that, as, as, as Mr. Finocchio said, was a culmination of so many people's efforts. We simply were the last two to get involved in, in this 20-plus-year investigation, and it was truly astounding to see how much, how many people worked so hard and to get the kind of results that we did at the end certainly made the effort of all those people worthwhile. And, and I'd like to thank Suzanne, because I could not have done this case without Suzanne, and hopefully it was, it was a true team work between her and myself. And it's just, I'm so glad, as, as Mr. Finocchio said, that we could bring some justice to the Gregor family for losing their, their mom. So, thank you.
Thank you. I mirror everything that Dave says. It was truly an honor for Dave and I both. I think we both feel honored and privileged to have carried this case through, and it's an honor and privilege. Many of you know many of the attorneys, investigators that work in our office, and we have such a fabulous office. And, and just the last thing I want to say, it was an honor to work with Mr. Tillman in this trial, and thank you, and thank you, Mr. Finocchio, and thank you to the people from our office. Mr. Beatty is in the back, and he-
He always, always tries to hide.
Very humble back there. And Investigator Bromland and Investigator Coffin, who did quite a bit of work as well, who are somewhat, you know, very deserving. But thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
I'd like to, I'd like to add my congratulations for a great job. The award you received is in honor of Anne Marie Bourgeois, who was a police officer I got to work with and actually tried cases with. And so, from that standpoint, she was a special person. So, you guys did an outstanding job. You represented the county well, the citizens of this county, and I've worked with many of the attorneys that are sitting back there, and I know the type of work that you've done and you'll continue to do, and I appreciate it very much, and I'm sure this Board does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, let's take up item number seven. Looks like you're up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number seven is pertaining to the recommendations of the Cost-Saving Task Force. What is requested action today is for your Board to accept these initial recommendations. There'll be many more to come, and then authorize my office to proceed with implementation of these ideas. To give you a little bit of background on what this is about, if you go way back to last early spring, Feb, actually still winter technically, February of 2009, your Board provided specific direction to county staff in terms of how to prepare our '09, '10 fiscal year budget. And as part of those companion actions, you also authorized my office to create what we call Cost-Saving Task Force. What that evolved into was a series creation of six committees focused in different areas: benefits, organizational, transportation, automation, and IT technology, purchasing, and receiver. There had, to initiate this, even before your February direction, I'd had a series of meetings with management and confidential employees over the winter period, and received over 200 suggestions on how to save the county further dollars as a result of those meetings. So, the creation of the task force was to take all those ideas that had been offered up by county employees, that had been offered up in a, in an open format, people sign their names to these recommendations, and then take these through these different specialized groups to just see how many savings we might be able to garner out of all of these ideas. Committees have been working diligently since that time. There's over 70 or so volunteers on these committees, and they analyzed, brought in subject matter experts, organized themselves, documented their work, and proceeded. The last component of the committee review is what we call the Clearinghouse Committee, and that was created in just this early part of October, and the intent was to have all these recommended ideas for cost saving to be thoroughly vetted through a committee that represented all the county departments. So, there wasn't the unintended consequence of having a recommended idea to save money to do a harm to a particular department or adversely affect the services it provides. That Clearinghouse Committee has looked at all of these recommendations, and indeed others, and these, they, they went through a series of actions that are really pretty simple on their face. The first was to consider all of the recommendations and to determine whether or not the idea warranted further discussion and research before coming to your Board for consideration. And in fact, there was at least one of those that they asked one of the committees to take another look at, to provide some additional substantiation of the recommended action. Two, that the idea would be ready for the Board consideration. The idea itself may not have readily quantifiable savings, but appears to enhance productivity or otherwise warrant implementation. In fact, you have at least one idea of that nature today. The third would, the idea is ready for your Board's consideration, and that the idea appears to have quantifiable savings, as identified in the summary analysis provided to your Board. And the last, that the idea has been sufficiently researched and is not recommended for implementation. Felt it was important that with all these good ideas had been put forward, even if they were not fruitful, that they should at least be documented in terms of not leading to the savings that had been anticipated, so they could be at least put aside. Somebody else may in the future come up with similar ideas. We could go back to it and show the documentation after these folks had actually undertaken this degree of review. What we have looked at is these recommended ideas that are before your Board today, are about a third of a million dollars in terms of annualized savings, and I think this is a conservative number, and I believe the Clearinghouse Committee members also feel that same way. What I'd like to do is, unless your Board has further questions about this, is really turn it over to those individuals who are the chairman and the CEO coordinator. These are all volunteers, and both these folks, as well as committee attendees, they did this in addition to their regular work, oftentimes meant lunch hours, other types of situations. But turn it over to them to tell you what ideas they looked at. These are the ones that, again, save real dollars or enhance productivity. We have a number of other ones that they've already gone through, but we thought at least here, we begin with the initial list and have them tell you what the recommendation is, how they, what they reviewed, the ideas that have been brought forward, and would move forward to implementation at the end of today's process. It's, there has been additional work performed by these committees, and will be coming forward in the future. I suspect about every two months, we'll have a similar presentation like this, and moving forward with the recommendations that your Board would find worthy of us moving forward. So, with that, is it, with your permission, if we could turn it over at this time? The first group would be the Purchasing Subcommittee, and Jim Brogan, who's a subject matter expert, and Nancy of the District Attorney's Office, and are going to be doing the presentation on the ideas that they have looked at and they think will save us some real dollars and enhance productivity.
Thank you, Tom. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Jim Brogan, normally the purchasing manager, today the subject matter expert for the Cost Savings Committee. Nancy Appelnap is the chair of the committee. Debbie Bartles was the vice chair. Ryan Baker is our CEO, analyst, and advisor. And then Barbara Basana and Kelly Heikle also were members of the committee. I have three items for you this morning. The first one is a productivity enhancement. If, we would call it an internal version of Craigslist for surplus in the county. Currently, the process is, if a department has a surplus item, they'll bring that surplus item to the surplus warehouse, which frankly is bulging at the seams right now. We'll accomplish paperwork to transfer the item into the surplus warehouse, let's say it's a desk. Then that department's happy. The desk is on display for anybody who might want it from the county as a, as a county item. Someone else comes in, sees the desk, says, "I want that from my department." We accomplish more paperwork, and they have to drag the desk back to their department. The process works, but it could be more efficient. So, what's been suggested is a Craigslist-type of an, an operation where the Department of Administrative Services Information Technology would set up on the county's internet, a Craigslist, which is sortable and searchable. And then county departments that have surplus items can post those surplus items for 30 days on the Craigslist. We may call it Kimber's List, since Kimber Goodman handles surplus. And then other departments can come in and search for items that they need. When they see that desk on the Craigslist, there's no need for all of that transfer to the surplus warehouse and back. They simply work with the department. There's no paperwork required unless it's a fixed asset, and they take the desk from the, the owning department to the new owning department without the intermediate trips. So, we see this as, while not saving money, is a big productivity enhancement for the surplus process, and it also helps to streamline the surplus warehouse. The Clearinghouse recommendation is that this idea is ready for your Board's consideration. The idea may not have quantifiable savings, but appears to enhance productivity. Any questions? Happy to answer any questions.
My understanding of the process as it exists today is there's a certain amount of time that existing county departments get to review items, and then it's opened up to private nonprofits, other government entities, that kind of thing. So, will there be various levels of visibility for these items, such that items are only viewable to county folks for a period of time before it then becomes viewable to others?
Exactly right. And then if the item hasn't sold on Craigslist, it'll go to the warehouse, and then it's available for those other agencies to look at. The final disposition, if no one ever wants it, is that it goes to our auctioneer, and we attempt to get as much money for it as we can.
And what is the current process for determining a, an item's worth, both internally within the county, and then externally to other government entities or not-for-profits?
We base it on what the, what we would expect that the auctioneer would get for it. Desks, cabinets, file cabinets and such are, if they're good desks, the auctioneer sells them individually, and they're worth 10 to 15 to 20, sometimes more. If it's a desk that's beat up, or a file cabinet that's beat up, it goes onto a pallet, and it's virtually worthless. So, we base it on what the auctioneer would get for it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm assuming we're hearing a number of defense suggestions.
Want to take them individually, or all?
Are you looking for action on, as kind of a group, or how do you want us to present?
What I would recommend, you'd hear all the purchasing subcommittee recommendations, and then maybe take comment on them as a whole, and if you think you have merit, just direct my office to move forward with implementation.
Great. Okay, the second recommendation is a cost savings to reduce or restrict office supplies to the lowest price option that fills the need. The recommendation for action is to implement the following policies for purchase of office procedures through our contract with Staples, which is a million-dollar annual contract with Staples. The recommendation is to purchase, purchase the cheaper house brand or generic items for office supplies and small equipment, things like folders, paper clips, Post-it notes, unless there's a bona fide need to purchase the brand name. Cost savings are estimated at approximately 10% compared to brand named items when you purchase the generic item. The Procurement Services Division did a six-month study based on things that we bought through Staples' website, and most of those were brand-name items. We looked at the pricing for the alternative items and discovered that over six months, the county could have saved $38,000 by buying generic items rather than brand-name items. An example would be 3M Post-it notes versus Staples' brand of Post-it notes, which is actually 40% less than 3Ms, and no discernible difference in quality or function. In this process, procurement would continue to supply training to people new to that Staples website, and we would also continue to fold training into our departmental training that we conduct on a regular basis. So, the basis behind this proposal is that we would have Staples, and we already have had Staples set up their website, so that when you ask for 3M Post-its as an example, it shows you the price for 3M Post-its, and immediately below that, it shows you the price for alternate products that would fulfill the same need, right under it. In that case, is Staples' own Post-it notes at 40% less. We have the ability to, to make that choice, or to eliminate the choice and just show the lowest price item, but the committee believes, and the Clearinghouse Committee also believes, that the department heads have ultimate responsibility for their requirements and their purchases, and so we should leave the option available to purchase what the department head wishes to purchase. The Clearinghouse's recommendation, therefore, is that the idea is ready for Board consideration. The idea appears to have quantifiable savings, as identified. The $38,000 study projected out over a year would be about $76,000 per year. The Clearinghouse further noted that the ultimate product selection should be left to the business needs of the department, but we would recommend that the general default on the website should be to the lowest price item, and we can have Staples set up the website so that it shows the lowest price item first, and then the brand-name item underneath. And we present this item for your consideration. Okay. You're on a roll. Okay, here we go with the third one. This is also cost savings, the use of recycled inkjet and laser print cartridges. The recommendation for action is to require purchase of recycled color or black inkjet print cartridges, which has the potential to save as much as 20% over new cartridges. Since about 40% of that $1 million staple budget is actually spent on printer cartridges, there's the potential to save- there's the potential to save as much as $60,000 a year just by using Staples' remanufactured printer cartridges. They guarantee those cartridges, and while not all of the cartridges are available right now, Staples is remanufacturing more and more types of cartridges as we go along. The basis for this recommendation is that Administrative Services Information Technology, again, conducted a study using recycled cartridges in our machines and found that there was no discernible difference between Staples' recycled black cartridges and brand-new black cartridges from Staples. They repeated the study with color and found the same result with color, no discernible difference. And again, Staples guarantees those products. So we have arranged with Staples Corporate Express to recommend recycled cartridges when they're available for all printer cartridge orders. Department representatives are currently not required, but they are encouraged, and we encourage them to order recycled print cartridges. The Clearinghouse recommendation, this idea is ready for board consideration. The idea has quantifiable savings as identified. And those are the three items from the Purchasing Committee.
Any questions? Kirk?
I just move forward with the recommendations of the Purchasing Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good job.
Thank you, sir. And the next committee up is the Automation Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian Jagger with Supervisor Euler's office, and I am also proud to say I serve as the chairman of the Automation and Information Technology Task Force. With me today is Anita Reese from the County Executive Office. We are very pleased to present to you today several additional cost savings and work-efficiency recommendations our task force has come up with for your review. The first item I would like to speak to is the concept of more use and education about the use of video and web conferencing tools to conduct county business. One of the first things we did was educate ourselves on what systems were currently available, and then educate ourselves on the use of those tools. Currently, the tools the county has in place are Synexus, an Outlook-integrated web conferencing system, as well as multiple video conferencing systems throughout the county. We came to the conclusion that without spending any additional capital upfront money, but instead focusing on education and implementation of these existing tools, we can potentially save in excess of $67,000 a year in travel-related meeting costs, not including labor. And those are costs based upon current travel reimbursement rates. One of the first things our committee did was to start using Synexus, the web-based conferencing tool, for our meetings, which helped save the travel that would have otherwise been required of staff who would have come from Roseville and from the county government center at DeWitt. Our firsthand use of this program has allowed us to present you today with a detailed recommendation on beginning the education and implementation of use of these tools throughout the county, as you will see in your packets. We would appreciate your support of our findings, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Kirk, are your lights still on? Do you have any?
Is the Synexus, is it video conferencing?
No. Synexus is separate from the video conferencing tools. The county has separate machines specifically for the video conferencing that allow the two-way. Synexus is live audio and screen sharing through the web.
Kind of a go-to meeting.
Exactly. Yeah, very similar to a go-to meeting product, our WebX.
Jennifer, are you done? Jennifer, sorry.
All right. Needless to say, I would welcome this sort of thing. I do an awful lot of driving, and probably not all of it, certainly not all of it, would be necessary if we implemented this suggestion. I do have a home office. Have we looked at how this could be installed in offices such as mine from home so that when I have meetings with other county staff, I could just do it from my home office instead of having to drive to DeWitt or the domes or Roseville or?
By dialing in through the Cisco system from your laptop, you should be able to use Synexus today. I will verify that with IT, but Synexus should be available today, whereas the video conferencing would require physical placement at a county facility that had the video conferencing system.
Okay. And is there a minimum speed that would be necessary for the Synexus?
You know, that's an excellent question. I don't know the answer to off the top of my head right now.
Need a little more than two 10 cans on this.
I do live on Donner Summit, you know, so, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Great work.
If there are no other questions, I'll continue on to the next item.
You bet.
The second item I'd like to speak to you about today is printing. Our Subcommittee was given eight printing items to consider. We consolidated those down to one overall county-wide printing recommendation. First and foremost, the easiest way to save on printing is to not do it as much. Our recommendation encourages departments and individuals to use electronic or scanned copies for reference more, and only print what is absolutely necessary. Second, we have analyzed the cost the county currently pays and may pay under the Recycle Toner Ink Purchasing Proposal, and have determined we should eliminate the use of inkjet printers as replacements are needed, and instead use laser printers as the cost per page is lower over time. We also recommend the increased use of the larger and more cost-effective shared printers, such as the Toshiba's, versus the smaller and more costly individual printers. Though we understand there are instances due to security and confidentiality that this is not plausible, the use of individual printers should be the exception, not the rule. Third, by using the county's Central Services Department to print larger jobs, it will free up staff time and significantly reduce departmental costs. Between these measures, we believe we can save as much as $80,000 in the first fiscal year savings. As you will see in your packets, we have created a quote-unquote cheat sheet for users to know the best practices for printing. As part of our recommendation, Purchasing and Central Services will work to keep the quote-unquote cheat sheet updated to reflect what practices are the most cost and time-efficient at any time as technology and costs change. Again, we would appreciate your support of our findings, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. The printing of these materials that we have in front of us today, were they considered in this study as if we used our laptops here at the dais?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, that is a separate item that our committee is currently reviewing.
Sorry.
No, no, I appreciate you bringing that forth.
I had a bad day today, haven't I?
We, actually, this meeting, for example, I did not have my agenda packet printed up and went as a trial of using the online. Supervisor Euler has agreed to test for us at an upcoming meeting using the laptop.
I've used it, and I like, I use it at Secog and I used it well with Roseville.
Yeah, so that is a separate item that our committee is working on right now and hope to bring forth to the board at a future conversation like this.
Okay. Sorry, I jumped ahead.
No, appreciate it.
You were talking about printing, and you spent a lot of money printing.
Yeah, no, it went to a separate item where it would be not just the Board of Supervisors, but looking at the additional committees and commissions.
First here, but I'll go with Jennifer, and then I'll go with Kirk.
I'm first, excellent. This may be unrelated or tangentially related, but a number of people have suggested that all public documents of the county be scanned and made available online. And have we looked at what cost savings that would afford us?
That is another item that is under consideration by our committee. So it was another item that somebody from the staff had recommended and is on our list of items that we're currently working on, so hopefully, again, that will be coming forth to the board before too long.
Great, excellent, because I think it's certainly a suggestion worth following up on.
Absolutely.
Kirk? Your item about, or your request in regard to our board packets versus viewing them electronically. Brian actually took the rather bold and extraordinary step of asking me if I was willing to forego my printed packet for today's meeting and use my laptop. My observation of Brian and something that his committee will have to take into consideration in terms of the overall cost savings was a rather long meeting today and no power outlets up here. So, yeah, in terms of analyzing the cost savings associated with going away from the printed packets into electronic means for the board up here to use our laptops, that's one of the things they'll have to take into consideration, is what's the cost of the electrical run going to be to give us power right up here? Because I would not have been able to sit here with my laptop plugged in because we don't have the?
Unless you had a spare battery.
Unless I had a spare battery, that's true. Good point. But then they would have to figure in the cost of me going out and buying a spare battery. Also, the carbon footprint generated by me driving to the store.
We can just analyze the cost of extension.
The amount of the packaging, you know, then it's figured.
Speaking of carbon footprint, actually, on the, going back to the web conferencing and video conferencing, one of the parts of the recommendation or notice is that we create the ability for ourselves to track our savings of our carbon footprint as we utilize web conferencing and video conferencing, and that should hopefully help us in some of our state requirements for reporting in the future. Just wanted to add that on as you mentioned that, Supervisor Euler. Sorry, so any additional questions?
I'm not going to say a word. I'll just wait for you to go.
I will now hand it over to Anita.
The last item we're presenting is one of 15 cost-saving suggestions submitted which propose to streamline the administrative processes and increase worker productivity. Primarily, these suggestions relate to payroll, budget, and billing and payment processes. Specifically, the recommendation before you now is for departments to consider implementing an electronic invoice and interface payment process developed by Health and Human Services to process invoices received from the county's office supplies vendor, which is now, formerly Corporate Express, now Staples. The Subcommittee found that this new process reduces duplicate data entry and processing time, as well as saves mailing and paper costs. If this new process were to be successfully implemented by departments, it's estimated that about $6,000 to $12,000 would be saved annually in addition to HHS's current reported annual savings of over $15,000 in staff costs. This recommendation will be coordinated by the Auditor's Office since they maintain primary responsibility for the oversight of the Performance Accounting System, better known as PaaS. The Auditor will convene an internal working group of department PaaS users and along with HHS staff, train department personnel in the new electronic invoice and interface payment process. As a cost-saving measure, the PaaS users group and a separate internal work group under the oversight of the Personnel Department will vet the other 14 cost-saving suggestions which relate to improving administrative processes. These work groups will report back to our Subcommittee as they complete their assessment of these items. The Clearinghouse Committee recommended approval of all of the three cost-saving suggestions before you today. This concludes the Automation and Information Technology Subcommittee's presentation, and we welcome any, we welcome support of our recommendations and are here to answer any questions you may have.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Good job.
And then, I'm sorry, I'll turn it over to the Receiver Committee.
Thank you. Paul Thompson with the Planning Department, along with Leslie Hopson at the CEO's office. The members of the Receiver Committee include myself as the chairman, Dan Dotai with Engineering and Surveying Department sitting as the vice chair, Karen Bork with the DA's office, Robert Long with HHS, Denise Minlin with the CEO's office, and as I mentioned previously, Leslie as our CEO coordinator for the Receiver Committee. Just a little information about the committee itself. While the other committees were formed based on similar subject matters, the Receiver Committee was based on a collection of miscellaneous ideas, but generally fall into three categories of fees, budget, and payroll. Today, Leslie and I are going to be presenting to your board three cost-saving suggestions and the Receiver's Committee's findings and recommendations to those suggestions. The first suggestion would be to perform a detailed audit on all departments' payroll processing to look into internal control issues and possible abuse of leave hours and overtime. The findings of the committee was they found that this is an ongoing effort as part of CEO and the Auditor's Office. The Auditor's Office is currently performing an audit of the Community Development Resource Agency, and as a part of this audit, they'll form a template that'll be created for all the other departments for their use. So with that, our recommendation is that CEO's Office continue to maintain an oversight insurance with compliance with the departments in regards to potential abuse problems, and the committee also recommended that the Auditor's Office complete a template for countywide audit and distribute such to each department so internal control issues can be identified. While immediate cost savings have not been quantifiable, we're looking to future cost savings in this category. The second suggestion.
Questions, Jim?
Any questions?
Yeah, and reading that item about possible abuse of leave hours and overtime, we do currently monitor overtime and leave hours. Can someone, especially for the audience, explain how we do that at this point, how we monitor overtime hours?
Well, I can speak for our department, and as far as overtime goes, overtime has to be pre-approved at this point, and it's for specifically for meetings, like, for example, MAC meetings in which the county staff has to attend. So it's very limited at this point, and it is monitored by a pre-approvable.
Yeah, I know that we do have that. We do monitor overtime. I was at a meeting this morning, and I was taken to task because it sounded like we haven't been doing that in the past, but we certainly have. Yes, one?
If I could clarify, thank you for bringing it up, Supervisor Holmes. These, again, the origin of all these ideas were unsolicited or solicited cost-saving ideas going back to last winter, and what we want to do is bring all those ideas up, even though the county may already have currently handled the practice as well, to show that things are in progress or already have been implemented in terms of addressing these ideas. Because periodically, the same idea floats to the surface again and again and again, and we want to document it that we're doing it a particular way. This really, I think, the savings that are identified in here is that we have 25 or so different county departments with subunits, and the counties experience a large degree of growth over a number of years, and trying to make sure we have the best business practices, best management practices established countywide. That's the template we're talking about, and to take it further is to make sure that we do that, then we end up getting even more efficiencies than we already currently have, and to recognize that the ideas were put forward and we want to do honor to carrying forward the full dialogue on employee recommended ideas.
And then, let me just make a statement that since we do have a hiring freeze on and there's less people doing more work, there will be more overtime, but it will be monitored very carefully. That's all I want to, be sure that the audience and the public knows that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. The second suggestion was to change the policy on development securities, and this would be ensuring that the county is appropriately compensated for the staff time spent dealing with development security departments. In our findings and recommendation there, currently, the Director of Engineering and Surveying Department intends on taking a deferred improvement agreement policy to your board for adoption in the next several months. The policy contains a full cost recovery of staff time spent creating deferred improvement agreement, as well as managing the associated security deposits. The Receiver Committee therefore would recommend that no further action regarding this objection other than monitoring the statusy of the policy and confirmation of the board's adoption. The anticipated annual cost recovery could be as much as $15,000 a year.
Questions? Okay.
The last one is review trust fund accounts for eschewment. Our findings were that per the Government Code Section 550, 556, it requires unclaimed funds left on deposit with the county treasurer longer than three years will be eschewed to the county's general fund. Number two, annually, the financial reporting unit of the Auditor Controller's Office sends a memo to each department with trust funds under their control requesting a detailed listing of the accounts slash amounts. That should be eschewed under this code section. In April 7th of 2009, the Auditor Controller received approval from your board to transfer over $23,000 of unclaimed monies to the general fund. So our recommendation there would be that the Auditor's Office continue to annually review and notify the departments of all trust funds available for eschewment under that Government Code Section, and then semi-annually follow up with each department maintaining trust funds to monitor the status of the accounts eligible for eschewment.
Any questions?
That concludes our report. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Good job.
Thank you.
Move approval of recommendations of the Receiver's Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for your work.
And Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me one last comment. Just want to, for the benefit of our viewing audience, you know, at initial glance, many of these items might appear to be focused on the detail or mundane somewhat in nature, but they all are important, either from the productivity or the savings of dollars that add up to significant dollars in the total summation. The other thing is that you're looking at a cross-representation of a number of county employees from different departments so that they can build on each other's ideas, and you're also leading to the further support, not that we don't do this regularly, but support of best business practices that with your direction concurring with these, I will take that and make sure that they're implemented out there on departments, and they're sustained, because to achieve these savings, they must be sustained. I think we've got the cooperation of all the county departments. It's really about sharing some of these best business practices. We need to make sure we implement these. We need to make sure we embrace this concept of these ideas that come forward, and we seek to implement this, and we seek to review these on a regular basis. This is not something I would look at your board just doing as authorizing to occur once, and then we're done with it. This should be an ongoing process and lead to this kind of further examination of everything we do in a perpetual motion type of thing. I think you'll be well served by that.
You know, to build on that, I'm sure we've all worked in businesses or been involved in businesses where they have a suggestion box, and you put a suggestion in there, but nothing ever happens. And so it's important, we take these suggestions, like you said, I'm just kind of building on that, and we actually do something with it, because the folks that are doing the work, that's where it all counts. So, but thank you guys for your work.
Rocky, if I could --
Yeah, Jennifer, I'm sorry.
Sorry, if I could follow up on that. One, I want to thank all the folks on the task force who have put so much of their time and energy into this. It's very important to the county, all of us taxpayers as a whole, that we identify where we can come up with cost savings that do not adversely affect the level of service we give to our residents, including ourselves of this county. Following up on both Tom and Rocky's suggestions, I'm going to be handing to the Clerk of the Board. I've been receiving from people by email, by phone call, in person, a number of suggestions, some of which may be repetitive of the 216 which are in here, some of which may be new. I've just been asked to make sure that I did submit these, because I think some of them are new suggestions that the various task forces could look at, so I'm going to give those to Ann. But then I also believe that we need to take separate action. If I'm not correct, on item 7.2, which is actually authorizing the county executive to implement these, I don't think we made that as part of our earlier motions.
Do you want to make your another motion in?
Sure. Move to authorize the -- where am I?
County Executive Office.
County Executive Office to proceed with the implementation of the identified cost-saving measures and/or productivity improvements reflected on the recommendations previously adopted by the board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. If I might just add that if there's any other ideas out there, be welcome to and actually look forward to receiving those. Just email them to me. I should point out that one of the successes of the ideas that have been submitted is that they come with somebody's name attached to them, so we have not only the ability to follow up with who generated the idea and what their thoughts were, because oftentimes there's groups or individuals who provided great detail on their cost-saving ideas, but there's also a sense of accountability, that their recommended idea, that they know that as it follows through, that it's an idea that has merit, that there's something that's worthy of these folks giving so much of their time to.
And it works better than a letter to the editor.[869.32][869.32](laughter) Thank you again, though. All right, now we'll move on to our 950 item, Health and Human Services.
Good morning, Chair Rockholm, members of the board. I'm Cheryl Davis, Director of your Human Services Division. With me today, Dave Snyder from your Economic Development Department, Marcy Schmidt from our Dave's Business Advantage Network, and Jason Buckingham, who's Executive Director of the Golden Sierra Workforce Agency. We are really pleased in what is otherwise a bleak economic environment as a team to bring forward to you what we think is a little bit of good news. We are asking your approval today for a federally stimulus-funded job creation program. The program is a collaborative with Health and Human Services, BAN, and Golden Sierra that we believe in the spirit of the World Series that is going on, is a stand-up triple for Placer County. We believe it will assist our struggling employers, meet their workforce needs. It turns a welfare check into a paycheck for our families on aid, and there's an infusion of over $1.3 million into our local economy that Dave can explain better than I, has a conservative income multiplier that is the equivalent of about $5 or $6 million into our economy. Any questions on that, I will defer to Dave. Placer County is receiving federal economic stimulus funds to be used to create jobs in our county through what is called a subsidized wage program. The program targets our parents who are on CalWorks, which is the cash aid program for families with children. Employers who create jobs under this program and hire our targeted job seekers will be reimbursed 80% of the wage they pay that new employee. Many of you may have already heard from the businesses in your districts about the 80/20 program. That is what the businesses are calling this. They're not calling it subsidized wage. They're calling it the 80/20 program. As you know, the unemployment rate in Placer County has doubled over the past several years. Our welfare rolls have increased 67%. So under this program, it's a much-needed boost to helping folks back to work. We will place over 150 CalWorks parents into jobs that are minimum of 32 hours a week. The benefits, of course, are that employers will now be able to hire folks that they otherwise could not, and it will help their struggling businesses. Dave and Jason can give you a little more detail of what the employers are talking about, but they're very concerned about the holiday season and having staff, because this is an opportunity for them to generate some income so that they can sustain their businesses. And then, when the economy improves, employers will already have trained folks ready to take on those jobs, where they won't have to pay for recruitment and advertising, as well as retraining. Our participants then will have access to jobs that otherwise would not have been available to them because of the economy, and what we are finding of our new families that are coming on public assistance, that many have been recently laid off, are job-ready and possess skills that our employers will just be able to take advantage of right away. This program operates through September 30th of 2010, but there are some options for renewal that we will keep our eyes and ears open for so that we can sustain this if need be. Employer recruitment is -- will occur throughout the county, and this is where I will turn it over to Dave. I've been privy to some of those activities, but don't know them all, and I'm sorry. I'll turn this over to Dave.
Thank you, Cheryl, and good morning Chairman Rockholm and members of the board. I'd like to congratulate --
I don't know where that's coming from.
Oh.
Give a little background music.
Thank God it wasn't me.[1111.01][1111.01](laughter) I'd like to congratulate HHS, BAN, and Golden Sierra on crafting this stimulus-related job creation program. I constantly hear from my counterparts in other counties with the question, how do we connect economic development and workforce development? And I tell them to look no further than our partnership with HHS, BAN, and Golden Sierra. With double-digit unemployment rates in Placer County for the first time in memory, this program prepares and places job-ready individuals into the workforce and off public assistance. As a federally funded effort to supplement our current local activities, this injection accentuates our job-related programs and employer support tools already underway throughout the county. Some of these include, in Roseville, Rockland, and South Placer, our annual job fairs at the fairgrounds, and also at the University of Phoenix, that have attracted up to 100 employers and thousands of job seekers. Support of the highly successful and recent business walks throughout Rockland, Roseville, and Granite Bay, whereby employers are connected with resources, programs, and advocacy that they would not ordinarily be apprised of. Recruitment assistance, including our individual recruiting events, such as the very successful job talks that were done with Home Depot in North Auburn. The Gold Country Job Fair. Our more recent partnership with the City of Auburn to support expansions and hiring out at the Airport Industrial Park. And of course, our Chamber Ambassador Program, which is countywide. Throughout Tahoe, our referrals and links to the ski resorts, particularly at this time of the year, with their recruiting events, not to mention the upcoming business boot camps designed for small businesses looking to increase their competitive edge. Those are coming up in Tahoe from November 17th to the 19th, so right on the horizon. These placements that we're talking about today are really a match made in heaven for many of our businesses out there throughout the county, and they're looking to sustain themselves in this current economy, and this is a great tool in which to do that. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Cheryl for a few moments.
Please accept my apologies. I did read the sign. I thought I had turned off my cellphone. Excuse me. This is just not something we're asking for out of the cold. We do have proven success that we would like to share with you on a similar, smaller-scale program that we call Work Experience. Again, it's a partnership with BAN and Golden Sierra. Human Services reviews our clients and does some assessments, and we find those that are most work-ready. We refer them to BAN, who then does a match with employers in the community for a placement, and then Golden Sierra works with the employer so that there's some reimbursements there for our participants. We have to share with you some of those success stories, and I'd like to bring up a few of our employers, if you don't mind. First, I'd like to introduce Bob Thornton from American Red Cross, and our participant Teresa Graham.
Supervisors, it's a great opportunity for us to share, on behalf of the American Red Cross, Placer District, Sacramento Sierra Chapter, the success that we've had with this program. I'd like to introduce Teresa Graham, who came to us about 10 months ago as a volunteer, and spent quite a bit of time, sometimes 20 to 30 hours in our office, volunteering, working on various projects. Through the WEX program, we have now been able to offer her some employment and be able to pay her in addition to the time that she does as a volunteer. It's made such a difference during our recent fire. She was able to call up the volunteers much quicker, because she was used to our systems and able to work with that. So I just want to say thank you so much. It's a strong program, and we hope that we, as the economy improves, that we will be able to take advantage of the 80/20 as well, because I don't want to lose her.[1439.47][1439.47](laughter)
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. It's been a great program that I've been allowed to participate in and very lucky to be a part of it, and I hope that it continues to benefit people in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The 80/20 program, with the funding that we're receiving from the federal government, will allow us to increase the Work Experience Program, or WEX, as you heard Mr. Thornton just referred to, five-fold. Now I'd like to introduce Michelle Miller from the North Roseville Recreation, who is also a worksite for us.
Good morning, good afternoon, whatever time it is right now.
It's still morning.[1481.41][1481.41](laughter)
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for Placer County, for the support of all the nonprofit agencies within the Placer County area. And as being a small nonprofit agency, the collaboration that we've built between the county, CalWorks Program, and Golden Sierra has been awesome comparative to being able to grow our programs. We haven't only used it as an employee base situation, where we can actually weed out good employees to bad employees, which is cost-effective for us, because we're able to train, see whether they work out, whether or not, and it doesn't cost us anything. And that's a really good portion of the program that's really helped us out a lot financially. I have gotten a couple of good workers that are right now is able to help me with building the funding for our nonprofit into going into the 80/20 program, and which has built us up stronger financially, because I'm able to train them into doing things like grant writing, administration, thank you letters, donation letters, things like that. So they're working almost basically to learning different things and different ways of doing admin with -- through a nonprofit agency that they normally wouldn't learn, which has been really kind of exciting for some of the workers that they brought to us. But I want to thank the collaboration. It's just been awesome, and I don't know how we would have survived through the summer programs without the CalWorks Program. So I just want to thank you and thank Golden Sierra for giving us the workers and being able to allow us to continue our programs, so.
Thank you very much. And finally, we have a private sector employer. We actually tried to reach out for more, but given the economy and working and things like that, we are especially very grateful to have Dolores Bothello from The Artistic take the time, and for everyone to take the time from their busy days.
Thank you, Board members, for allowing us to come here today. Just to give you a little background, I own a hair salon here in Auburn. I've been doing hair for 45 years, and I --
Are you looking at me?
No, I'm not.[1613.01][1613.01](laughter) Maybe it's just I focus on that end of the -- and we've owned our business in Auburn for 35 years, and my dad always used to say, he was a great mentor in my life, and he used to go to a barber shop in Penrin, and he said, "The difference between a good haircut and a bad haircut's about three days." That's not true anymore, so.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So we pride ourself. We've worked very hard to be a leader in our community and our industry. We've recently, in the last few years, been inducted into an organization called Intercofear, which is, some of the top designers in the world belong to this. There are 200 members in the United States and Canada, and I'm proud to say that we are one of those people, and we pride ourself on the level of education that we offer. And in today's economy, it's been a godsend to be able to be part of the on-the-job training funds that are available to us, because we want to continue on with the level of education that we provide. And people want to come to our salon, because we do offer a high level of education. We teach goal-setting, not only technical, and how them to be job-ready, because most of the technical schools today, when they come out of school, employers sometimes are not willing to give them an opportunity, because just because they have a certificate or a license doesn't mean that they know how to actually execute what needs to happen, and especially in our industry, because it's the state requires that the student learn the health and safety of the client. But when they come out of school, the statistics show that more than 50% of them drop out within the first year of getting their license, because they are built up to have this graniose idea of what it's going to be like, and they need that extra training to be able to go on to have a more lucrative profession. So again, I really pride ourself on what we offer in our community, and we're trying to create a level of expertise and professionalism and create a role model for our industry. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Jason Buckingham from Golden Sierra, and Steve Russell, who has been a great person to come out and help you get this program implemented. So thank you for the opportunity. And Nicole, I'd like to introduce Nicole. She's one of our first people to be part of our on-the-job training, and she'd like to just share some of her information.
Being a part of the job training has helped me receive great education and training from The Artistic. With all the education and training that I have been receiving, it helps me grow within the salon and myself to become a successful hairdresser. Without the program, I would not have been able to receive the proper training and education that I that I have now.
Do you have any questions, Ms.?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
And last, I'd like to introduce Jason Buckingham, who'll share with you a little bit of the strategies for bringing on the 150 employers we need to make this a success.
Good morning. How is everybody? I think I'd like to sit here all day and hear all these great comments about me. I appreciate that. What I actually wanted to do was give you just kind of a brief overview. Again, my name's Jason Buckingham, Executive Director for the Golden Sierra Workforce Investment Board. Sometimes you'll hear it called the Job Training Agency. I wanted to give you a brief overview of what it is that we do and the services that we offer. I know that some of you supervisors are familiar with us. We've been very appreciative and thankful to have Kirk Euler's oversight and attention for the last three or four years, something like that. So our organization was formed over 25 years ago. We were formed with a joint powers agreement between five counties. Currently, that JPA continues to serve three of those counties, which are Placer, El Dorado, and Alpine. Our primary focus is workforce development, and what we do is we provide job seeker services, vocational training, and business support services to adults, dislocated workers, and youth. Though we're not an economic development organization, we do attempt to work closely with economic development. In fact, currently, we're providing more than $800,000 to economic development organizations within our region to provide business retention services through what we call the Vital Assets Program. Some of the no-cost services that we provide that are relevant to our discussion today to job seekers are paid and non-paid short-term work experience programs, on-the-job training programs, which are slightly different, and internships. Most recently, we used $1.2 million from the Recovery Act to... that we received from the Recovery Act to employ 250 youth between the ages of 16 and 24 for a six-to-10-week period with a program that began in May. So it's a program that we haven't had available for more than 10 years, and that was, again, made available through the Recovery Act, required a very quick ramp-up time. Programs like these involve high levels of coordination, administrative and client-tracking systems that are already in place, knowledge of labor laws, contracts with local businesses, both public and private, financial reimbursements, and perhaps most importantly, an understanding of the federal, state, and local monitoring, performance, and audit controls. And again, we've been performing these types of services since 1983, and we've been doing so successfully with stringent federal requirements and also performance standards. So that's the basic idea of what it is that we do. And when this program was bought forth to us, we thought, well, that's a perfect match. So let's see if we can't work a partnership together. So we're fortunate and thankful to have the opportunity.
Thank you.
What we're asking you today is your approval to go forward. Will take us from a triple to a home run, keeping my little World Series analogy going. That's...
You should mention that Chase Utley, then. That's the one you want to emulate.
Yes, I know. Go Phillies. And with our proven success and our strong collaboration, we believe that we will be able to hit the ground running with your approval and to turn this into a positive, not only for our employers but for our job seekers. With that, Dave and I...
A and B in one motion. Robert?
I just requested that you give us some feedback as to how the program proceeds.
I move approval of items A and B, and then under discussion. Just want to recognize Jason's efforts. For those of you members of this board that haven't met Jason or been introduced to him, Jason took over as Executive Director of Golden Sierra about 16 months ago now, in a fairly tumultuous time in the organization with the previous Executive Director stepping away in rather odd fashion. And Jason stepped into the role and has faced a couple of administrative challenges that he has worked aggressively through, managed his department very effectively, all while dealing with several millions of new dollars that have been infused into his organization by virtue of various aspects of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And Jason's mindset has always been in recognizing that these are temporary funds for temporary programs, that we will utilize contract relationships, extra help employees to spend these dollars, and not burden our joint powers authority and therefore its member organizations with long-term obligations to employees given the nature of one-time dollars. So he just, he came into the role at a very tough time for the organization, and our governing board, Skip Beach from Alpine County, Norma Santiago from El Dorado County, and myself, we've been just thrilled with how the organization's been running this past year. So Jason, just wanted to introduce you formally to our board and thank you publicly for the role you've played in the last year.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Roll call.
Euler?
Aye.
Wykan?
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm?
Yes. Thank you.
Very much.
All right. The next item is Mr. Rui Cunha.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Rui Cunha. I'm the Program Manager for Placer County Office of Emergency Services. The item that you have before you asks that your board conduct a public hearing to authorize the collection of fees for fire protection planning in the Placer County Fire Area, approve a resolution adopting the fee schedule, and adopt an ordinance incorporating this change into Placer County Code. The fees that you have before you have their basis in the California Fire Code, which was adopted by your board and incorporated into Placer County's Building Code in November of 2007. The California Fire Code establishes minimum requirements consistent with nationally-recognized best practices to safeguard public health, safety, and general welfare from the various hazards that exist in new construction as a minimum, among other things that the California Fire Code does address. California Fire Code addresses both construction permits as well as operational permits. For this action, we will only be addressing construction permits. Just very quickly, I'm happy to be joined by the Fire Department to assist with the specific things that we have that may come up in questions. So, thank you, sir. In order to comply with the California Fire Code, Placer County Fire Protection Planners, which Bobby Eicholtz is one of them, completes one of any number of the 37 tasks that exist within this item, and in some projects, several of them. Those projects are listed in Attachment D in your packet, and in Attachment D, it shows the basis for the specific project or the task, the associated fixed fee cost associated with that task, and then lists those tasks. All but three of those tasks require a site visit associated with them. So when you look at the fees included in that is the time that it takes to physically do those various site visits. Placer County Fire provides fire protection planning in the Placer County Fire Area, and then the map, if I can draw your attention to the map, it is the area that you're looking at that's highlighted in yellow. The scope of this does not incorporate any of those portions that are covered by special districts, and then obviously does not address any of the areas within any of the cities. So it is specifically that area that Placer County Fire services today. The Placer County Fire currently realizes some fire planning revenues. Those fire planning revenues that Placer County Fire is currently realizing exist from our support to major developments, and as we speak, in that support, we are generating $68 per hour for our support to major developments, whether that be plan checks or those types of things. In addition, Placer County Fire is realizing $56 an hour for projects that we accomplish in the North Auburn OFER Fire Area, formerly Placer Consolidated. That's a fee structure that, at the time of dissolution of Placer Consolidated and the incorporation of that zone of benefit into Placer County Fire, your board maintained that fee structure specifically for that area. So right now, we are realizing a small amount of revenue, but in both cases, the hourly rate that we're realizing related to major projects and the hourly rate that we are realizing in the North Auburn OFER Fire is not a full-cost hourly rate, and that is one of the details that exists within this packet. Attached to Attachment D as an appendix are specific data sheets for all 37 tasks. All 37 tasks have associated time, materials related to each one of the fees, which does provide the detailed background for public review so that everybody knows exactly what it is that they're paying for with each one of those fees. The data that you're looking at was derived from 2007 data in terms of the time that it takes to do the various projects, but the rate itself was derived from current costs. So the hourly rate that corresponds to the fee that you're looking at is based on our current costs from the CAL FIRE contract currently as well as additional administrative costs. In our efforts to reach out related to the fees, we did reach out to several professional associations and briefed them on what we were doing in general. Most of them looked at our fees comparatively to other fees that they experienced in development, and realistically, the fees that we're looking at here are relatively minor by other comparisons. It is still an additional fee, and certainly that was a consistent comment with everyone that we presented to. As you can see, as opposed to a time and materials fee, what Placer County Fire is asking for is a fixed fee. We're asking for a fixed fee primarily because it provides certainty to the developers and to anybody that we are dealing with. They know what they're going to pay in advance of the fee. And we believe that we have included all of our costs in relation to the fees that are shown here. In addition, as a general practice, when you look around at what other fire departments do by comparison, what staff is recommending for a consistent fee is what is generally practiced by the various other fire districts as well as the cities around us. So it is fairly consistent. The fiscal impact related to this, we do believe that over time, the revenues that will be collected from this fee structure, which, as I mentioned earlier, the majority of the work in the Placer County Fire Area is not covered by any fee. Even though the major project fees, even though we do realize some benefit to work with major projects, the majority of the work that we're doing today is not major project-related as you might imagine. But we're still doing it, and we're doing it at no recoupment of the costs associated with that. We do believe that the revenue will offset the general fund augmentation to the contract currently. It is staff's assessment that by the conclusion next fiscal year, that we'll realize somewheres in the neighborhood of about $90,000 in additional revenue to the Placer County Fire System as a result of these fees, and that's based on the workloads that we're looking at today. Subject to any questions that you might have, certainly Bob Eicholtz can handle any technical information related to specific tasks, and then I can certainly answer any questions on policy. Thank you very much.
Seeing no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring you back to the board. Kirk?
I do have a question. It gets at the nature of where we're taking this fee from, and too, you see right now we're collecting $58 an hour for these services, and so we're looking at essentially doubling it to $110 an hour.
That's correct.
Okay. In doing the analysis, it seems that we're using the assumption that the way that we're doing this permitting is the right way or the only way to do this permitting. And I'm curious, did we look at... It kind of gets back to other conversations that we're having at the board level about, you know, what things do we actually need sworn officers to do on the law enforcement side versus things that can be contracted to other entities? Or in this instance, are there not other planners, private planners, that have whatever stamps might be required in order to provide these level of service where we don't need a fire service representative at, no offense, but at their particular pay grade? Because when you compute this out hourly, you're talking about an employee that has a total annual cost of almost a quarter of a million dollars a year. Is there not somebody else that might work a little cheaper that we could be utilizing the services of in order to provide whatever review is necessary for these things?
I think that's a very fair comment and a very fair assessment. One of the things that I will mention, Supervisor Euler, is that this particular hourly rate that you're looking at compares pretty well with the hourly rates that are charged by Placer County staff, no matter which department that you look at. In fact, we're actually one of the least expensive hourly rates that the county is charging, and none of those are sworn individuals. So that's number one. Number two, to answer your question as it relates to the possibility of other staff doing some of this work, I think the answer to that question is yes, and it is work that we would embrace and would be happy to participate in coordination with whether it be Bob Martino or with Ken Graham or any of the staff that is doing similar work. There are some crossover tasks that, as an example, driveway inspections compared with the 7A inspections, which 7A inspections are defensible space inspections in and around a residential structure as that is done. Is it really necessary for two staff to be there to do, one do the driveway and another one do the defensible space? I think that's absolutely something that we've got to coordinate and make sure that we're offering our residents the least costly method for accomplishing those tasks and meeting the permits. I do agree with that.
I appreciate your comments about comparatively where this works out on an hourly basis against other county-related functions we perform. However, viewing it in the context of what our existing cost structure from a county employment standpoint looks like, not necessarily the most solid foundation to be comparing it against when we're looking for the next three years at significant structural budget deficits driven by those relatively high employment costs already. And when we're dealing with an area development that has seen a tremendous drop-off in activity, those development-related departments are feeling that from the standpoint of how they are removing employees from certain positions, reassigning elsewhere, and all those kinds of things. So I don't know that that's the business model I'd want to be comparing myself against right about now.
I understand.
Jim? One of the most critical pieces of the incorporating Placer Consolidated in the county fire system was that that become revenue-neutral. And we were able to do that because Teresa Leonard sharpened about two boxes of pencils going through the analysis. But this is, by passing this, it helps us to keep that revenue-neutral. But this is, by passing this, it helps us to keep that revenue-neutral. So, although it is a bitter pill to swallow, I think it is imperative that we go ahead and move forward with this. Jennifer?
Rudy, thank you for the presentation. Am I correct in believing that we can revisit this on a yearly basis, these fees?
That is correct.
So, we could, in response to Kirk's concerns, we could look at, are there alternate ways of doing some of these processes that could save us some money at the county level and then pass those savings along to the folks to whom we're charging these fees?
That is correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that part of the process. Second, my understanding, and please, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is this is merely an extension of kind of the larger county policy that new development pay its own costs?
That's correct.
So, we're not charging people more than their costs, to the best of our understanding right now through our analysis?
That is correct.
Okay. Then, my feeling on this is that, you know, we should probably move forward with adopting these today and then continue to look, are there, you know, in response to Kirk's suggestions, are there ways that we can save some money and lower these fees in the next couple of years? Obviously, we want to charge people appropriate fees that cover their costs, and if we're too high, we need to identify that. If we're too low, we need to identify that.
I understand.
Thank you.
Was that a motion? Oh.
Second.
So, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we'll take up the ten forty-five item.
This item, before you ask that your board conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the Placer County Fire 2009 Capital Improvement Plan, a new plan which increases mitigation fees from fifty-five cents to sixty-five cents per square foot for residential property, and from forty-one cents to forty-eight cents per square foot for commercial-industrial property, and approve the use of the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for the San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose area, which is our closest metropolitan statistical area for annual fee adjustments going forward. The Placer County Fire Capital Improvement Plan for 2009 is a new plan. It updates the plan that was conducted by, that was done by Placer County in October of 2007 and approved by your board in February of 2008. This plan provides a basis for funding fire stations and apparatus required as a direct result of new development coming into Placer County as we move forward. This plan ensures that new development only pays for the new fire facilities and apparatus necessary to provide fire protection services associated with that new development. It also ensures that existing service levels are not negatively impacted as a result of that new growth. Lastly, it ensures that new development does not pay for existing system deficiencies. So, those components are all built into this existing plan, and I'll get into a little bit more about existing system deficiencies here in a second. As your board is very aware, property taxes and special assessments are principally what fund the fire department's ongoing and daily operations. And with that, that includes management as well as facilities and apparatus replacement. So, when we talk about mitigation fees, we are not using these fees or the revenue that's collected from that for operations or for apparatus replacement associated with it. It is only for new stations and new equipment as required from new development. The law that governs this is California Government Code 66,000. It provides the authority and the conditions by which you may, we may collect fees associated with new development. And it requires that we have a publicly noticed hearing and that that hearing be conducted by you as the governing board. The 2009 conforms with the government code. It identifies the purposes of the fee. It identifies the specific use to which the fee is to be put. It determines the reasonable relationship between the fee and the type of development that we see going forward. It determines the reasonable relationship between the need for the public facility and that type of development, and it determines the reasonable relationship between the fee and the cost of the various facilities that are associated with it. Those are all the requirements of 66,000. This plan meets that. Placer County retained Willdan Financial Services, a third-party consultant to put together this study with the associated fee. They're a well-respected public-sector financial consulting firm, and many of the jurisdictions around us have used that firm consistently. Study addresses all of the legal requirements of Government Code 66,000 and has all of the supporting data behind the fee itself. The study's scope is consistent with the item that I just gave you before. It essentially covers that area that is highlighted there in yellow, which approximates four-hundred-and-seventy-five square miles of Placer County. It's nearly one-third of the total land area of Placer County is covered by this fee. It does not, nor will it impact any residents that exist with any of the special district areas that are highlighted in the various other colors that you're looking at there. Currently, Placer County service population within that yellow area is approximated at about fifty-two thousand five hundred. That area is projected to grow to a population of two-hundred-and-nine thousand, so it's nearly a four-hundred percent increase in population between now and 2030, so over the next twenty years, as development is expected to come back. The study analyzes the entire service area, and while it does include large developments, and they are addressed in the study, large developments are not used for the computation of the fee that is before you right now. As you know, large developments are covered by development agreements, and in those development agreements, we have negotiated fire facilities as well as apparatus specific to those large developments. And in general, as you know, those large developments are expected to be at an urban level of service based on the densities that exist there, and so ultimately, that's one of the primary reasons that we don't address that in this particular plan. So, certainly, when I talk about a two-hundred-and-nine thousand, or an increase to two-hundred-and-nine-thousand population, I am including large developments in that. The actual growth rate in the more rural portions of the county, which are used for the computation of the fee, are expected to be thirty-seven percent over the coming twenty years, as opposed to four-hundred percent, as I mentioned, in the other areas. The study does support the fee increase, again, sixty-five cents per residential property and forty-eight cents for commercial property, and that compares with the 2007 study, which supported a fee of sixty-four cents and forty-eight cents per square foot. The system deficit in the new plan is projected, over the next twenty years, to be just over fourteen million dollars, and in the prior plan was projected at just under thirteen million five hundred thousand system-wide. And what the fee ensures and what the plan ensures is that new development doesn't pick up that system, that existing system deficit. That existing system deficit ultimately has to be shared, and we have got to find alternate revenue to fill that gap if the fire department is to build out at what is described in the Currently, Placer County provides rural and suburban levels of fire protection services. We do that throughout the area that's there. We do that primarily, as you know, through a contract with CAL FIRE. That service is conducted from eight fully-staffed stations, Alta, Colfax, Bowman, North Auburn, Ofer, Lincoln, the Sunset Industrial Area, as well as Dry Creek. Additionally, the system currently supports about a hundred active or semi-active volunteers, functioning from a number of volunteer stations, to include Dutch Flat, Fowler, Page, Thermalands, Lone Star, and Sheridan. Placer County Fire operates and maintains fifty-one current vehicles as we speak. Our estimated value of the system is about eighteen million dollars, and our contract costs are eight-point-five million dollars. Over the next twenty years, Placer County approximates that we will transition from a rural and suburban service to include urban service levels associated with the larger developments that we've talked about, and with that, of course, the growth that I mentioned. The plan addresses a hundred-and-two million dollars' worth of costs that will be needed to meet the growth associated with, associated with Placer County and the large, as well as rural areas within the system. With that, the, as I mentioned, the comparison of the fee and one of the other items that I've asked you to approve is I've asked you to approve the use of the CPIU for San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose. I've asked for that specific CPI because that is our closest metropolitan statistical area, and so as a result, it's one that we are able, and we use currently in several portions of the county system. As part of the plan, you will also find a capital improvement plan, and in that capital improvement plan, there are details about our existing balance related to fire mitigation funds and how we plan on using those funds going forward. We have an existing balance of just over four-and-a-quarter million dollars, and then additionally, we're expecting to collect two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars in revenue this year. We have costs associated with the expenditure for new equipment of one million one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand this year, and it consists of five-hundred-and-fifty thousand associated with adding an apparatus bay at Station 100. It also includes four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand for vehicles and apparatus, and then an additional eighty-eight thousand for special equipment, twelve thousand for planning fees. There is no impact to the general fund as a result of this action, so that concludes my formal briefing. I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have.
Kirk?
So, in 2007, we got a report that the board acted on in February of 2008 that established a fee based on the premise of cost recovery. Here we are eighteen months later, in a time where we've seen prices for our own projects fairly consistently come in thirty, forty percent underneath engineer's estimate, reflecting the fact that the price of providing services in the private sector has dropped rather We're being asked to adopt a fee that is increasing eighteen percent in one case, seventeen percent in another case, in the same time, in eighteen months, when it seems that every other cost driver associated with development is going down, this is increasing fairly substantially in that timeframe. So, what has happened in the eighteen months that says that the fees that we adopted in February of 2008 are insufficient, and here in November of 2009, we should be increasing these fees seventeen and eighteen percent?
The October 2007 study, as indicated, actually recommended a fee of sixty-four cents per square foot for residential parcels, based on the data that existed within that report, and a fee of forty-eight cents per square foot for commercial property. The actual adjustment from October 2007 to this plan in 2009 takes us from sixty-four cents to sixty-five cents in terms of actual recommendation, and from forty-eight cents for commercial property, it actually stays the same. In February of 2007, I asked your board to approve a reduced fee from that recommended in the study, and I asked your board to approve a reduced fee at fifty-five cents and forty-one cents, based on some knowledge that I had at that time, which was different than what we had at the time of the study, associated with actions related to Plaza Ranch. That was certain, and in fact, in case, did impact both costs as well as fees and how the fees would be collected. The primary impact was as it related to regional portions of the system. Regional portions of the system support both the new development, both the larger developments, as well as the more rural areas, and those costs are spread amongst those large developments, as well as the more rural portions of the system. So, what I knew in October 2007, when the plan was completed, and what we took to the board in February 2008, caused me to ask your board to approve a reduced fee. Now, I'm back before your board with the 2009 study, and naturally, the 2009 study doesn't incorporate Plaza Ranch, and so that portion is completely out. I'm now very confident that the fee structure that we've put before your board is, in fact, a full-cost fee structure.
Well, let me just, if I may rephrase, and if I mischaracterize, please correct me. Sounds like what I heard you say was, in February of 2008, we were operating under the assumption there was going to be a major project coming in, and that major project would have had the ability to address certain existing deficiencies within our existing infrastructure that negotiated through the development agreement, that meant that you could recommend a lower fee than what you said the study otherwise supported. So, phrased maybe slightly differently, what you're saying is that that project was being asked to not just pay its way, but pay to help fix an existing deficiency, which is what resulted in a recommendation for a fee that was otherwise lower than what's necessary?
That's actually not correct. What, you know, the system, as an example, the regional fire facility that's described in the plan, which at the time of the October 2007 plan had a price tag of twenty-six million dollars. That regional fire facility and those associated costs were spread in accordance with the plan equitably amongst large developments, as well as the rural county area. So, that regional capability was spread evenly between all of the developments that were there. Plaza Ranch had its fair share of that regional fire facility, and I can show you the data. The, when Plaza Ranch was removed, obviously, it took with it a substantial population, and it took with it a substantial share of that regional fire facility. Between October 2007 and 2009, we've had to revisit that facility. We've had to revisit the capability that exists there, and we've done that. It is now less expensive than it was before, but it is still equitably distributed amongst the large developments that will benefit from its existence, as well as those portions of the rural county area that will also benefit from... of the rural county area that will also benefit from it being available. And as I mentioned, it's a capability that involves maintenance, involves administration, it adds all of those pieces that we are currently contracting with Cal Fire for and paying for through our Cal Fire contract. Does that better answer?
Well, I think what, again, what I think I heard was, we now have a recommendation for something that's cheaper than what we'd originally anticipated, yet I'm trying to figure out how that then results in a recommendation for a fee increase. Unless, I mean, perhaps logically, unless the assumption now is that there's nowhere near ultimately at build-out the same number of units that that cost is going to be spread out over, I don't know if that's what's driving then the per-square-footage increase that would be attached to the remaining units, but then conversely, I guess I'd ask the question, if we are dealing with an assumption of fewer units at build-out, then why wouldn't there not be a corresponding reduction in overall protection level that's required, and therefore, a reduction in the cost associated with providing that protection?
I'll go back to my original point. The original study in October 2007 recommended 64 cents. The current study recommends 65 cents per residential square foot. So the reason that we were at 55 cents doesn't have anything to do with the math that the study has in it from October 2007 to 2009. That math is still good. What's important to understand is that the portion of the county that impacts the actual fee is that more rural portion of the county. It does not include the large developments. The exception is, in those regional capabilities, where the large developments pick up a portion, their fair share of those regional capabilities. So that is unchanged. It's unchanged from 2007 to 2009. What is changed is the portion that's available for large developments to pick up equitably compared to the portion that equitably is picked up by the balance of the system. So we've done a couple of things. We've reduced the costs associated with the regional capability, because we've gone in and sharpened pencils and crossed things off that ultimately we have to do without in order to make this work. But then, number two, we've spread those costs, again, equitably between large developments and the rural portions, and those do impact the cost. In terms of growth, the growth in the more rural portions of the county is essentially unchanged from the October 2007 plan to the 2009 plan.
And I apologize. My confusion just, I guess, persists over what 18 months ago was a recommendation, and the only thing that has changed is the assumption of one major project, and I don't know how with, I don't know how without the assumption being that that one project was going to absorb a cost elsewhere. We would have had a true fee recovery based on a fee that's 17 cents less if we were not counting on that particular project to pay for perhaps a disproportionate share of impact. I just, I don't, the numbers just don't jive in my head, and maybe it's, maybe it's me, maybe it's lack of coffee.
With your permission, if I could ask, along the same vein, so Plaza Ranch, is that still shown as to be developed in the unincorporated area with its portion of costs? Forget about it being a project, but that land is in your model as being developed within the unincorporated area?
That's correct.
Okay. My concern was that with the collapse of Plaza Ranch as a project, that your formula took that potential for development out, but it does not. It is in your plan.
That's correct.
It looks to me like 2007 numbers would have been 64 cents and 48 cents.
That's correct.
You chose to reduce them because it showed Plaza Ranch within.
Correct.
Now it's gone, so all you're doing basically is going back to the 2007 recommendation, adding one penny.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience, huh? That's what I was going to do. Anyone in the audience with Dennis Rogers? He was ready to charge the, the...
No. Mr. Chair.
Good morning. It still is morning.
Yeah, it is. It's a beautiful morning. Thanks for the time. You know, one of the interesting things about coming up and commenting on this particular issue is that, given the history, or given the practice of Placer County, most of the large developments, which is really the concern of my association, are handled under development agreements, and this more or less really is applicable to the area outside of that. But nonetheless, it is a fee increase. And one of the things that I just wanted to come up and just spend just a few moments with you is just to have a quick discussion on cost reduction. I think Supervisor Montgomery mentioned that there's a concern relative to cost structures, and I know that myself and a number of volunteers from our organization have met with Mr. Miller and opened up discussions relative to a review of the cost structure for development within the county. We're doing it on a regional basis. We're doing it from Elk Grove, Ranch Cordova, Eldorado County, all the way up through the Placer County Water Agency, which we actually made a presentation in front of their board on the 15th, and I've already had a meeting internally with them about reviewing their cost structure to look at ways in which we can address systemic change. Because as we all know, the costs of development, well, let me see, the economics of development, not the cost, but the economics of development have gone through a systemic change. I don't think we're going to see the level of activity from a financial standpoint in the development sector that we saw in that little mini-run-up that we had. And so, in our discussions with Mr. Miller, he's been very open to having a sit-down with us and having this discussion. Again, from our perspective, what we're incredibly interested in is to have something that is sustainable over time. We want something that has a relationship from wage rates to sales price ratios so that at the end of the day, we're able to have a product that people can afford, because it's kind of a bad business model to build something that, A, people don't want, or B, people can't afford. Typically, that creates some difficulty for you, I think, in the future. And so, in our follow-up with Mr. Miller, and the reason why I'm here this morning is just to let all of you know that we think, as Ms. Montgomery has said, that you can review the fees, actually, you don't have to wait for a year. You have the authority to review a fee anytime you want to. You have to go through the state law apparatus, you know, the AB 1600 analysis if you're going to move it up, but you can review it anytime. Our suggestion would be that we work cooperatively with you, as we've expressed to Mr. Miller, to sit down and have these discussions and review your cost structure, not to come in and just try and whack things, just to whack things, but to actually look at the assumptive set and see what are things that are working, what isn't. Is there new ways in which we can do things, ways in which we can drive the cost structure down so that we can build products, so that we can address the needs of this growing population, not only in the residential sector, but in the commercial sector, and do it in a collaborative partnership manner? And that's what I wanted to spend my three minutes talking about this morning, and since I have 10 seconds left, I actually finished early.
Good job.
Dennis Rogers. I'm with the North State Building Industry Association. So we're hoping that the five of you would be willing to be supportive of that so that we could actually sit down and get moving on that. Thanks so much.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
I don't think in that I heard anything by way of a request by the BIA in regard to this particular fee at this time.
Well, we would love to not have any fees go up. You know, that goes without saying, but one of the things that I'm also very cognizant of and that we look at is, in certain public safety issues, and especially given the recent history of this county with this issue, I accept the fact that there are times when we have to be willing to accept things that we don't want to. We would still encourage you not to increase it because we don't think that, given the history of projects that have come in, that you need the additional revenue. We think the systemic change in development is going to actually drive costs out of the system, but at the same time, if we could sit down with all five, with the support of all five of you, and sit down and look at these cost structures of the county, we think that we're going to be able to drive additional cost out of the system so that we can make that up. We're very supportive of making sure that we have adequate fire facilities, police and sheriff facilities, and obviously, infrastructure like water and sewer. Those are the things that are very important to us. The more discretionary things, the things like, such as affordable housing, or some of the other things which are not necessarily our burden, are some of the things that we think we can drive costs out, are obviously, I think it goes without saying, that our request would be that you just hold pat with where you are, and we think that the economic environment today doesn't impact you, because, A, there are not a lot of permits being pulled, so the opportunity to cost loss of revenue is not that great. And then, your opportunity to sit down and actually work cooperatively with us so that we can address the cost structure and have it sustainable in the future would be a net positive. Again, we have to have you, as a public agency, successful in your cost and revenue balance, because that's the only way that we're able to be successful in delivering our product, so it's not something where we want to put you at a disadvantage. We just think there might be better ways to do things.
Are there any other comments? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Second, and Rocky, if I could, under comments?
Yes.
Dennis, appreciate your comments, and certainly would be, I think, all of us be willing to go through that kind of a review. We always ask staff, of course, to do that kind of analysis, and in fact, have to, to make sure that we do look at our cost structure, but I think it's always good to get outside information to see whether or not it seems to be on target or not, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Kirk. Just two final thoughts. Number one, I've heard it said a couple of times that the development agreements are more or less exempt from this. However, the escalated fee becomes the basis for the negotiation into those development agreements, because now staff can look at you and say, if we did it on a price-per-square-foot basis, it would be this, but look, you're 5% less. 5% less after 17% increase is still an increase over where you were before you sat down to negotiate the development agreement. Number two, I'm still having trouble in my mind with the math. Won't go over it right now, but would like an explanation, Tom, from your office as to what it is I'm missing here, because I'd really like to understand how, in 18 months, with one assumption of one project going away, it necessitates an 18% and 17% increase. And then, finally, I'm very concerned about the recommendation that this fee be tied to a consumer price index based on San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose. As we've seen in our area, in other parts of the Central Valley, as we have had home prices, costs for commercial real estate and all the rest drop off dramatically, we've seen it drop off much further and faster than some of these areas that we're describing. I don't think it's reflective of what happens within our local economy, and I think there are a number of other barometers that are much better. There's a number of different resource institutes, SAKOS with one of them, that provide data that is specific to our six-county region that says, here's really what's happening with our costs of doing business within our region, and so I think that we shouldn't be tying our CPI to something that has absolutely no relevance to our marketplace. Those are my comments on the motion.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We are going to take a quick five-minute break before we take up the PCCP. We'll be right back. All right, we are back. We'll take up the 11 o'clock item now on the PCCP, the long-anticipated report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lauren Clark with the Planning Department. The presentation materials that we'll have this morning are presented by staff, but really on behalf of Supervisors Euler and Weigant. It includes agreements and elements of discussion that involve the City of Lincoln with their electeds as well as their staff.
Can I say something before you go any further?
You may.
Just real quick, I want to thank Supervisors Euler and Weigant and all of the staff, City of Lincoln, and all the people that actually have worked long and arduous for many months now, many years. And that is one committee I'm glad I didn't get on.
It's one committee, I'll be pleased when it concludes. And actually, that's exactly the point, is the material that we're presenting this morning is being presented by staff, but it really does represent collectively the interests of the county and the city as it comes out of the ad hoc committee. So with your indulgence, I'll move right through the material as quickly as I can in the sake of the hour. I know we have some additional items as well. The first slide to my left really represents the area that the PCCP is intended to cover at this time. It's a very simple map. It shows the county and the city's interests collectively, which represents the unincorporated area of Placer County outside of District Five, as well as the City of Lincoln's current city limits. One of the reasons why we believe -- come back. There. One of the reasons why we believe this responsibility is falling onto the county and onto the city primarily is because that is where the growth is occurring, as we project into the future. The pattern of growth historically has gone along the Interstate 80 and, more recently, the Highway 65 corridor in Roseville and Rockland in terms of large percentages. When you roll the clock forward into the year 2060, you start to see a shift. What we anticipate is a net new population within the county and the city of about 224,000 new persons, as well as 90,000 households and approximately 153,000 jobs. That causes a change to the landscape of about 56,000 acres, and that's the key issue to the PCCP, is how much land changes as a consequence of that growth. In this slide, you do see the non-participating cities in that sort of salmon color. On the left-hand side represents growth in the near term. On the right-hand side is growth out projected about 50 years. So again, more graphically, you can see that net change from growth in the primarily cities of Roseville and Rockland shifting to the unincorporated area of Placer County. When you look at the landscape of western Placer County, it's a diverse place. It's a very diverse county, and when you come just to the west side, it's a very diverse place. We're working in an area around 1,200, 1,300 feet in elevation, down to the valley floor, under 200 feet in elevation. You have a number of major and large natural communities, some of which harbor endangered species or are regulated through the Federal Clean Water Act for their wetlands. The first slide to my left represents the areas within which we predict that there are riparian or wetland habitats in Placer County. The wetland areas in particular have this relationship to sensitive species, but they also have this relationship to state and federal law, and even new emerging state law as it relates to regulation of endangered species and, more importantly, the waters of the United States for the Clean Water Act. What we also find in Placer County is we have wetlands in area that you wouldn't necessarily predict them. You have streams that are greener and wetter today because of how we manage our water. We have a lot of water in Placer County. It irrigates a lot of land. We have a lot of conveyance facilities, including our streams, so we're pushing water through a very large system, and as a consequence, it's different today than it was 200 years ago. So we have a very unique regulatory environment in that regard. The majority of time that we have spent within the ad hoc committee has been focused on dealing with vernal pool grasslands. This information to my left, and there's more information in your staff report, represents the new and updated vernal pool mapping data. The original work that was done back about four years ago identified vernal pool complexes. A lot of information was seen from property owners as to the accuracy of that information. We went through a long vetting process through an academic community, through the consultant community, and through public outreach, and we resulted in this information to my left and to your right. That served as the key resource on the valley floor in terms of the work that we did on the reserve map. An area that we haven't spent a lot of time in in recent years because we had spent so much time on the vernal pools is the oak woodlands. So now this has reemerged into the conservation strategy. It's been a difficult issue because we have an interesting environment out there. Oak woodlands exist in Placer County in essentially two components. A very highly fragmented foothills rural residential environment where a lot of us live, and then we also have very large tracts of land, Bear River area, the Garden Bar area, where oak woodlands are in very large parcels with very few roads. A slow impact that will continue over time in that rural residential, as well as large areas for conservation opportunity up near the Bear River. When you actually try to draw the reserve map, the time that we have spent with the committee has been focusing on these resources, but then collectively, as you evaluate these resources, as well as everything else that is happening in the landscape, you start to get a sense for where there are priorities for conservation. This figure shows in bright red the highest priority areas, when you assume a number of features, and the sort of the darker green is the lower quality areas. What the map generally tells you, and it's no surprise, it is intuitive where growth is occurring, where fragmentation is occurring, largely we find fewer and fewer endangered species, and the value of the resources are diminished over time as habitat. You move into the very rural or agricultural areas of the county, resources are intact, the values go up. When you start to balance that with the contemplation of growth out for 50 years to the year 2060, you start to look at your general plans, you start to look at your growth projections into the future, and you start to make those hard decisions. Where are there opportunities for conservation? Where do we want to plan for growth? Where we do want to conserve is their priorities within the landscape, and that starts to emerge in these reserve maps. Where we're at today is a reflection of where we've come from. In January of 2007, the board directed us to use the map on the far left. That was the reserve map that was intended to initiate negotiations. The map on the right is where we are at today, and we'll walk through some of the details of these maps. In particular, the map that is shown now on the screen is really a result of two maps that came together out of a staff-derived initiative to try to draw various reserve alternatives. The board said, we're going to start with this one and go forward, and let's form an ad hoc committee to do that. What you see is about 71,000 acres of conservation potential and about 142,000 acres of growth potential. The key, which is what we've been chasing around, is that little note on the bottom that talks about a vernal pool preservation ratio. With this map, it was about a half to one. You've seen a lot of purple maps, you've heard a lot about purple maps. This is where this basic organization of information started to be used for the various alternatives we prepared. Areas in purple were areas within which you would build a reserve system. So it's not all of the purple, it's within the purple you build a reserve system. Areas in green are already protected. Areas in white, where areas where development would be the footprint within the landscape over time, and the areas in orange were properties that we believed could come into conservation based upon intent expressed by landowners. Roll the clock forward to 2008, the last time the board deliberated on a map was this map to your right. What we added was two new features into the landscape with this map. We added the blue area, or development transition area, about 22,000 acres in size. It was going to be dominated by growth, but there was a commitment to conservation. Roughly about 2,100 acres of vernal pools had to be identified within that area, but we didn't know where. That was the key. It was a commitment to conservation, but the location of conservation would be determined on a project-by-project basis. This map yielded one-to-one. The other thing that this map did is it brought forward the concept of stream conservation, stream protection, and stream buffers, shown in this terminology referred to as CARP or the County Aquatic Resources Program. And then bringing us forward to today with the new reserve map as recommended by the ad hoc committee. The purple is gone because this is no longer an alternative, this is the proposed map. The edges are intentionally softened. It was never intended to be at a parcel level of precision. It's an area, again, within which we build a reserve system. It doesn't have to rely on specific properties to do so. Organizationally, it's very similar to what you saw on the previous maps, a large reserve area, which includes areas already in conservation, a development opportunity area, as well as conservation along the stream corridors. When you look at some of the details of this map, there are certain notable characteristics that are worth calling out. For one is there's a portion of the map that actually represents lands within Sutter County on the 100-year floodplain of Coon Creek. It's about 1,700 acres in area. It is not an area that necessarily is needed for endangered species, it's needed for connectivity and restoration. That corner of the county where Sutter and Placer come together is the only location where we have this opportunity for connecting the foothills to the valley floor. Area number two points that out, it's really in that corner. Area number three is the Orchard Creek corridor. Routinely came up with dialogue with the agencies to connect up existing resources that were already protected with the reserve map. Area number four is the District Four bound, or District Five boundary. That was removed in 2008, so it actually is part of the recommendation today is to reflect that. Area number five is opportunities for conservation in the Curry Creek area that did not affect any of the current land use planning, as well as transportation planning in the county. And then lastly, and maybe most importantly, is the development transition area is gone. There's a full commitment to one-to-one on this map without having to use standards for a portion of the plan. So altogether, this represents about one-to-one, about 74,000 acres of conservation, and 110,000 acres of growth. It's also important to point out that this map has some wiggle room. The development opportunity area, that 110,000 acres of growth potential, represents build-out opportunity. There's about 30% of that landscape that we predict will be undeveloped at the year 2055 or 2060, so there's some room to accommodate additional growth in the PCCP beyond that permit horizon year. In terms of other work of the ad hoc committee, it hasn't just been on the map, but that was obviously an important thing to complete, as well as meeting the one-to-one. The watershed-level connectivity on the Bear River and the Coon Creek, valley floor to foothills, again, Coon Creek is the location for that. More precisely defined conservation goals and objectives, how you can measure those in the landscape is very important, and the map does that for us. The commitment to stream conservation along that buffer, the use of low-impact development standards to address water quality in the built environment, consideration of 50 years of growth, and continued coverage for Placer Parkway and the Sac River diversion. When you look at the resources themselves, we're doing different things with different resources. Valley oak woodland is an area of restoration opportunity. We can bring more back into the landscape. Our impact is relatively low. Blue oak woodland, we don't want to plant more, we want to take care of what we have. It's more of a fire management objective than new blue oak woodlands. For the vernal pool grasslands, the most heavily regulated resource, it's conserve, it's restore, it's create, it's compensate, a lot of things at work within the vernal pool grassland. Riparian, protect what we have and restore. Our impacts are relatively minor. Freshwater wetlands, again, heavily regulated, both conserve and replace. And then streams, it's protect the best of what we have and try to address some of our water quality issues. Another area that the ad hoc committee has just started to talk about, but it's worth reporting today, is the issue of governance. How does the PCCP run itself over time? You have three entities involved under this proposed governance model. One is the agency's historic role, which is in transition. They are the regulators today, they hand off their regulation to local government, so they've become more of a monitoring agency. On the far right is the permities, that's us, Placer County, and the City of Lincoln, as well as Placer County Water Agencies. We conduct our normal and traditional business of reviewing and approving projects, evaluating impacts through SEQA. As part of that, we will also pick up the obligation of doing the permit work on behalf of the agencies who have transferred that authority to us. So that's a very traditional role and continues to be a traditional role of the county and the city primarily. The new entity, a joint powers authority, termed a Placer Conservation Authority, they conduct the business of carrying out the PCCP, buying land, restoring land, monitoring what's happening on those properties, reporting out to the agencies, managing funds, et cetera. So in this summary, you can see the responsibilities of the Placer Conservation Authority. They have no regulatory authority. They may set fees, they may conduct all these activities in conjunction with the permities, the county and the City of Lincoln, but by themselves, this joint powers authority has no independent regulatory authority. And then again, the county and the city. And when you look at that list of bullets, that's very similar to what we do today in the land development process, but we are now picking up this additional burden of the state and federal government. And then lastly, again, with a diminished role is the wildlife agencies themselves. They are watching what we're doing, they're making sure that we implement the PCCP as we agreed upon, but they have really transferred their regulations to us. And in summary, where the ad hoc committee is today is we've completed the preparation of the reserve map, the board executed an agreement with the City of Lincoln just a short while ago. The consultants are working as hard and as fast as we can right now to try to complete the agency review draft by the end of the month, and then we'll start to coordinate that back through the ad hoc committee once you consider the recommendations for action today. In terms of the long term, we'll submit the plan to the agencies. During that plan submittal, we want to be working on the finance plan. When we have a sense, we have a strong project description, we will begin to finalize that finance plan, as well as work on the EIR/ES. The implementation agreement is really our contract, just like we have an entitlement in local government, which is the use permit in the tentative map, you might have a development agreement as well. The implementation agreement is really our contract. Distribution for final review and comment, final deliberations, plan adoption, and permit issuance. In terms of the recommendations provided in the staff report, it's, one, to continue really to have staff work with the participating entities, which is the City of Lincoln, PCWA, as well as Sparta, on the draft plan, so we will continue to work on it and coordinate. Also, request that staff continue to work with the ad hoc committee, and similarly, that's referenced in number three. So it's an affirmation of the ad hoc process and a recommendation that we continue that process. Number four is there's been discussion about District Five. That may be a part of the dialogue that the board is going to have subsequent to this presentation, we're looking for direction there. Five is to let staff begin work on the finance plan during this interim phase, while the agencies are reviewing the document. And lastly, to essentially reappoint Supervisors Weigant and Euler as they continue to work on the ad hoc committee and on the draft finance plan. And with that, that concludes staff formal presentation, and obviously, we're here to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up then for public comment. Tom? Mr. Davis, you're first up.
Good morning. Still barely. Terry Davis, Sierra Club. And first, I just want to say that I appreciate the distance that this has come, and I think the map has evolved in a very positive way in moving this along, and I really appreciate the recent update on the mapping of vernal pool grasslands. I think that's really helpful. That said, I don't think the map gets you there yet. I think that there's going to be quite a bit of pushback from the agencies on it. They've indicated to staff already that they're looking for something closer to the 2, 4, 6, and 7 that they supported before, so I think this kind of will open up a new phase, and hopefully a productive one. One more thing, I would like to see the ad hoc meetings as open meetings. I think to have closed-door meetings with the public excluded goes against the spirit and intent of the planning agreement that the county did with the agencies, so I think those should be open. That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Bob Shattuck with Lennar. Today, I'm also representing the Placer Vineyards Owners Group. If nothing else, my long involvement, I guess, in habitat planning in the region and throughout the state has given me a little appreciation for just how important and difficult a task this is. this is, and in that context, I really want to commend the work of the ad hoc committee and the staff on this. This is really good work. I don't necessarily agree with everything in the report, that would be a lot to ask at this stage, and I realize that a long process remains, and that the plan may continue to evolve as we go through that process. But overall, the general direction, I think, is very positive. I think it reflects thoughtful consideration of key issues, the kinds of issues that it's very easy to keep kicking those cans down the road until at the end of the road, you have a big pile of cans. And in this case, I think a lot of progress has been made. You guys waded into the issues, took them straight on, and are dealing with them. If things continue to go well, I just wanted to say it's our hope and intent as Placer Vineyards to utilize the PCCP, and we hope that happens. And with that in mind, we encourage your support for the continuation of the process in a manner substantially consistent with the recommendation of the ad hoc committee, and with the goal of having a submittal-ready document by the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Tim.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tim Taran.
Actually, it's good afternoon.
That's good afternoon, members. Thank you. I'm here today representing what Julie Hansen, the Placer 962 property, and I want to just say, as the other speakers have said too, boy, we've come a long way, just tremendous work, and hats off to the ad hoc committee and staff. I hesitate to ask how many hours, have they kept track of how many hours they've spent on this? Countless, probably, at this point in time, but it's tremendous work, and we too support the concept and the effort, and hope to participate someday in a successful PCCP. I want to talk just a minute, however, about one aspect of the map, and I don't know what's up. I've got it right here. It's the 962 is right there. The map shows about three hundred acres of the 962 in the reserve area, and we were one of the property owners when the county asked for additional information, we actually submitted some additional technical information on this property, and the result is that all, I think, all parties now look at this property and have recognized that the wetted acres on the property are zero to one percent, and it's characterized as highly disturbed. It also lacks connectivity now with any other resources in its vicinity. In fact, the adjacent properties, it is an island, as you can see, the properties around it all have the same, similar soil type and vegetation type. You add to that the land use considerations, which is that this property is in the Sunset Industrial Area, it's bordered on the west by an existing rural subdivision, it's bordered on the north by the future proposed growth of the city of Lincoln, on the east by the landfill, and on the south by Placer Parkway and the proposed Placer Ranch project. Also, as you all know, Dowd Road will eventually be extended along the eastern boundary of this reserve area, further degrading any connectivity. So for all those reasons, we continue to ask why it's in the reserve area, and would respectfully request that it be removed from the reserve area. Again, I want to say, state as a general matter, that we're very supportive and very pleased with the progress that this process has made, and with this one exception, hope that you move forward with the process. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Don't see any. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Cosgrove.
Oh, good afternoon. Enjoyed hearing some of the things that were going on. Tom Cosgrove, Mayor Pro Tem, city of Lincoln. What I would like to do is comment on a couple of things. First of all, to begin with, thanking Supervisors Wiegand and Euler for participating with the city in the ad hoc committee. I will tell you that the discussions that we had, while eventually becoming very productive, and I think a very good outcome, were very challenging and very difficult when we looked at the interests that we were trying to cover, both from an urban and from a rural perspective, and quite frankly, from the economics of both the county and the city that we're trying to deal with. I think this last year in particular highlighted the challenges that we have financially in trying to make a plan that's going to be successful, not only in its goal of respecting the natural resources that we have within the region, but also allowing us both as the county and city to remain economically viable, and to provide the services to the citizens that they expect and deserve from us, both as the county and the city. On top of that, there's just a whole bunch of folks, staff, Lauren, it's hard to follow Lauren on these things, because it rolls off his tongue so naturally, he's said this many times, and what's really important to note, too, is that each time he says it, he says it with the same passion as the first time he said it. He's become very vested in this, and that passion, I think, has carried him through some pretty challenging times with us, which we appreciate. Hang in there, Lauren, we're doing okay.
He always oka you very highly.
Yeah. I appreciate, I appreciate that. And not to mention, Tom, your work in keeping this going. We have a whole group of county staff that have done tremendous work, you've carried the burden on this, we appreciate that from the city's perspective very, very much. We don't have the resources to do that, you didn't have the resources to do it, but you dedicated the resources to do it, and because of that, we are where we are now. This is good planning, really, this is kind of what it boils down to. It's what the people who elected us expect from us, want from us, and deserve from us. If I look back and look at the blueprint that was done through CACOG over the years that I've served on CACOG, where we developed a footprint for urban growth throughout the six counties and twenty-two cities, Placer County has been at the lead in terms of the planning and the coordination with the blueprint principles. All the cities here, of course, have adopted the principle, as well as the county. This just goes another step, that the blueprint did a good job of looking at urban footprints, as our general plans have done, and, I'm done. If I may.
Finish.
The planning part of it, the general plans of the cities also are important, and the plan, general plan of the city of Lincoln, has played an important role in the discussions that we've gone through as well. I said from the beginning, the Habitat Conservation Plan has to meet the goals of the city's general plan. We've been able to accomplish that, I think, with what's on the board today. It comes through a lot of good, tough discussions, negotiations, a little give here and a little give there. There's actually been very little take in this, because most of it has been about giving. And through that, we've been able to accomplish a map now that I think is a very good map. There's not a lot left in this map, and that's something that I think is important to acknowledge. We've reached a point where, with the city of Lincoln, our general plan is satisfied, but we've also given up within our general plan some of the expectations that we had with our updated general plan, which we spent, by the way, eight years developing, and which we hope soon will get out of LAFCO. Then we'll be able to have a general plan that's complemented by the Habitat Conservation Plan, that allows the preservation of our resources and the urban development that we need in our region, in Placer County, for us to be able to succeed economically as well. Look forward to working with the county. Interestingly, when we talk about transitions, we are transitioning this ad hoc committee and this process from a stage of negotiation, you know, the old management forming, storming, norming, and performing. We went through the storming phase, which was a lot of what got us to here. This is kind of the norming phase. The next stages that we go through, in particular, the performing, are going to be critical to the success in being able to achieve an environmental work that is satisfactory for the resource agencies, and they will be challenged as we, as the county and city, have been challenged working together, the resource agencies then will be challenged to work with us in a way that accomplishes their goals and their mission, along with the goals and missions that we have, both as the county and as the city. Kind of a long-winded way of saying thank you. I appreciate very much everything that the county has done, the respect, I think, that we've shown each other, even though at times when we were pretty tense with each other, we always respected the interest and concern, I think, that each of us has had in trying to achieve our goals. And as the city of Lincoln, I will speak for the city in this case, we look forward to continuing with the process, working with the county, taking the environmental work through to completion, and ending up with a Habitat Conservation Plan that, in the end, again, provides for the goals of the county, and provides for the goals of the city, and in the end, provides the best outcome for the residents that we all serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Patiently waiting in the back.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today on this matter. My name is Stacy McKinley, and I'm here today representing CACOG, and most specifically, Mike McKeever, who regrets he's unable to be here personally.
Where's he all speaking today?
He's not, he's actually at home ill, so, otherwise, he would be here. Very, very briefly, I think everyone who has addressed you prior to my promised-to-be-brief comments have said much what I would wish to say on behalf of CACOG, particularly, Councilmember Cosgrove with his comments about how a successful PCCP will nest into the region's overall effort to not only develop wisely, but to conserve as well. And truthfully, I really just want to say, however CACOG can assist as you proceed, we stand ready to do so, and thank you, particularly to Supervisors Wiegand and Euler, the ad hoc, the staff, for including us to this point. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? See, now I'll bring you back to the board. Thomas Jennifer.
I would like, there's a number of requests here, and some are for direction, some are for more specific actions. I would like to address number four, just a little more in-depth, which is provide direction to staff with regard to the designation of lands in District Five in the PCCP. As many of you know, I am a supporter of the PCCP, I represent District Five, I do firmly believe that at some point, District Five, at least portions of it, needs to be included in the PCCP, and I would encourage us as a board to look at ways of including those portions of District Five that had been included until two short summers ago, looking at putting that back in. Having said that, it is critically important to me that we reach out to the members of that community who will be within the boundary area, and help them to understand the real facts behind what the PCCP will or may mean to them. I was here at that meeting two summers ago, and there was a lot of misinformation, I'm going to say, for lack of a better term, that was being raised as questions of concern to people. I mean, there were people here in tears who thought that this was going to change their whole lives. So it's very important to me that if we do direct staff to potentially put District Five back into this, we make an enormous outreach effort, and I will make myself, obviously, available night and day to make that effort. My second piece is, if indeed that is direction we want to go in, I do not want to derail this process in terms of the timing. It is crucial to me that we move forward with what we can move forward in a timely fashion, and I really, really want to make that very clear to the board. The outreach piece, I think, should go forward, whether we decide to include it in this, or maybe some phased, future piece of the PCCP, but I would ask my fellow board members to support me in looking at what that would take to put District Five back into this process without derailing the process, and making sure we have a full and complete public outreach process. And that's really all I've got to say.
Thank you. I know you two are up, can I let him go ahead and then, go ahead?
Oh, I would fully support that. I think it's imperative to put that part, the District Five piece, back into the Placer County Conservation Plan. Hidden Falls Regional Park is in that district. There's plenty of conservation opportunities, the Bruin Ranch for one, that runs along the Bear River, so it just, it would make it a lot more receptive to the regulatory agencies if we included those properties back into the Conservation Plan, so I would support that.
Kurt?
Oh, well, actually, Robert and I really didn't coordinate our thoughts too much on how we'd present a lot of this today, and so I just thought.
When have we ever?
And I was going to say, I just thought, consistent with how we've run the ad hoc for the last two years and nine months, I'd let you do most of the talking, and I just make inappropriate comments at inappropriate times. So with that, I'm going to let you go ahead.
Thanks, Kurt. First thing I want to do is, with my friends from Lincoln here, reiterate what I said this morning that would you missed, which is congratulations to the mighty zebras for beating Placer Hillman on Friday night, thirteen to seven, but who's counting? As Lincoln continues.
By the way, did you notice the striped pattern on his tie today, kind of resembling zebra stripes over there? I don't know if that was.
It's a conversion.
I was wondering about wearing rose-colored colors on your tie.
It was on sale. First of all, I want to thank everybody that's been participating in this process. The open space planning effort in the county began, actually, in 1997. A policy that is now referred to as Placer Legacy was adopted in 2000, and immediately thereafter, we started work on the Conservation Plan. So here we are, nine years later, I think, at a pivotal point where we're really on the cusp of some tremendous success, as long as we don't squander the opportunity. So I want to thank all of the people who participated, but particularly staff, for all of the huge number of hours and effort and diligence, and you particularly, Lauren, for writing through all of this with us. It's important to emphasize that the stakeholders in this effort, I think, have a common goal of wanting to see Placer County in total be as well-planned as possible, because the benefits from the Conservation Plan will benefit everyone in total, for sure, but beyond that, their interests are pretty diverse. And any plan in Placer County, I'm sure, is going to be imperfect to any critical stakeholder, but I think we've got our arms around something now that is grand for all of those purposes. And if you look at the current system of going through the urban development process with the local jurisdictions, the cities in Placer County, of course, in the county, and then marry that to the regulatory permitting process that occurs at the state and federal level, there have been some successes in Placer County, but there have been some horrible failures. Isolated preservation, emphasizing avoidance within an urban framework that don't function as the habitat that they were supposed to even function as when they were first permitted. We're a great laboratory, I guess, in that regard, but we have a tremendous opportunity to learn that, learn from that, and move forward at a higher level. I think the vast majority of deficiencies in the current system can be resolved with this plan, if, again, we don't squander it. As we move forward, we are on the cusp of presenting a project, which I think is akin to a major project application going forward for urban planning processes, so it clearly has the chance to change and emerge, but we still have to keep our eye on the ball, which is to have extraordinary planning for conservation that complements and enhances our planning for urbanization, and have that be done on a global framework, which in this. which in this case is Phase One of the Conservation Plan. So with that, I just want to address a couple of detailed comments that were made by members of the public. As it relates to District Five, I think it's extremely important that we put it back into the plan, and I would rely on staff to tell us when and how we have to do that to make sure that we don't compromise the timeframe of the delivery of Phase One of the Conservation Plan. But the original boundaries were drawn with a focus on smart planning. There are watershed issues that are important to natural resources that should be incorporated into Phase One, and there are some streamlining of permitting benefit to urban areas up in the Auburn area that can reap rewards from all of this. Frankly, they were taken out for political purposes that reflected misinformation, which was a good choice of words. And I think it's important that we reach back out to those residents and try to enhance that communication, but to the extent that we can do that in a timely manner, it's going to make the reserve area more intelligent and a huge improvement to what we currently have. With regards to the public notice query of the ad hoc committee and those meetings being in public, I, on one hand, strongly support your desire to have a public process, and we're all here today in that vein, but I, on the other hand, have to disagree with you, that I actually don't think you would want those meetings to be public. And frankly, I just, I don't think they would have worked had they been public. There are just times in the negotiation process where you have to have conversations that are probably a little bit more candid than most politicians would want, not to mention our county council. So I think the key is, at this point, frankly, we may not need to meet that frequently, which is a desire, but there will be things that come up that will have to be digested in detail in close quarters, and I think it's better for the process if we go ahead and do that, and then bring back publicly the results of that. And I think we're all committed to doing that, and I would guess that all of us involved are committed to meeting with members, stakeholders, and talk with them. I certainly am. With regards to the 970 or 960 or whatever it is piece, I just want to point out that if you look at the map and the reserve area, there are many goals reflected in that for the purpose of conservation and urban planning. For the reserve, we want it to be broad and contiguous and whole, and not reflect isolated permitting of habitat that's not going to function well, as if it was involved and surrounded by greater open space. It has to be affordable to manage. So just specifically on the 970 piece, the portion of it that is in the Sunset Industrial Area is included in the urban side of the plan. The portion that is not in the Sunset Industrial Area is included in the reserve. And frankly, we had a huge challenge being able to emphasize the avoidance requirements of the permitting portion of this as it related to vernal pool habitats. There are several habitats that we are looking to protect and enhance, but we have a shortage of vernal pool habitat for that purpose, so we're looking for any inch of important vernal pool habitat that can enhance the plan. And there are arguments on many of these other parcels, pro and con, as it relates to all of that, but I did just want to publicly state and have everybody try to understand that we had some broad policy methods by which we drew the map, and as it relates to that particular piece, the portion of that property that is in the Sunset Industrial Plan is included for development. The portion that is not in the Sunset Industrial Area is in the reserve. That's the method by which that happened. And with that, I'll close my comments and turn it over to Kirk.
And I'll pick up right on that piece, seeing as how that was a focus of continuing discussion right up through our last ad hoc meeting. And I think illustrative of the nature of the ad hoc meetings over the last two years, nine months, in that though we might continue to have differing opinions on specific things, the evolution of the goals and objectives of the plan as a whole have continued to move forward and be refined, and I think have yielded a much better plan than most folks thought would be possible two and a half, three years ago. I remember a meeting on the PCCP in November of 2006 that didn't go quite as well as some folks might have hoped it was going to go, which kind of gave birth to the evolution of the ad hoc and all the rest. And so here, three years later, we sit looking at a plan that has as one of its goals the ability to provide flexibility within that proposed urban footprint, that the recognition on the part of the ad hoc committee and our staff exists, that not everybody within the area designed for urbanization may ultimately urbanize. There might be pieces within the white area that don't develop or intentionally aren't developed, for whatever reason, that then give opportunity, give occasion to explore areas that are currently identified as being in the preserve area. There are any number of reasons why we'd look at pieces in the future, given growth patterns, infrastructure layout, the ability to afford that infrastructure, where we might look at this and say, if tweaks are necessary, does the plan have the flexibility in it for those tweaks? And the direction that we've gone so far clearly provides for that flexibility, and I think we'll continue to see that as this plan builds up. Having said that, I think it's important to recognize, not just the contribution to those of us that have been involved here, but really, the contribution of the business community. As Ronald Reagan said, the ten scariest words you can hear is, "We're from the government. We're here to help." And three years ago, I think the business community was pretty much lined up in lockstep opposition to a PCCP, and I think that it was with a great amount of trepidation that they monitored the first year, year and a half of this process, and with continuing work done by the City of Lincoln and by our staff and Supervisor Wiegand, bringing them into the process, getting them to understand how ultimately this was actually inerring to their benefit. It was a pleasure to see the evolution of the business community to where now, three years after that fateful November '06 meeting, we have representatives like from Winar standing up, and instead of saying, "No, no, a thousand times no," we actually like parts of this. And so I think the fact that you have Winar saying like and don't like parts of it, and the Sierra Club saying like and don't like parts of it, mean we're heading in the right direction. So with that, pleased that Robert and I have the chance to bring staff's recommendations forward to the board.
Yeah, and then I'll make, I got a comment I want to make. Go ahead, now, go ahead.
It's come up several times about public meetings and the ad hoc committee, and I just want to clarify so that everybody understands. The board has two volunteer members working on a subcommittee for the Board of Supervisors. And I'm sure the City of Lincoln thinks that we control their life completely, but they haven't surrendered their power as a sovereign. They provided two volunteers, but we haven't created a committee for the board that consists of the members of the City of Lincoln. City Council, they have voluntarily come forward. That's the nature of an ad hoc committee. Historically, we've used them usually in annexation agreements when individual supervisors would negotiate with other elected officials and things like that. The Brown Act clearly does not require that committee meet under the constraints of the Brown Act. Mr. Davis has referred to another process that we have engaged in with the agencies and understanding of the open public process. I think staff can go on repeatedly with the number of open and public meetings, and in fact, many meetings privately with Mr. Davis and others. I will point out that at some point in time, this informal working relationships, which has been somewhat contentious between the city and the county, will get to the point where if, in fact, the ad hoc committee, as it's described, is making decisions and giving direction to staff to carry forward to the agencies, we will have to review the nature of whether or not the Brown Act now becomes applicable to those meetings. So far, everything has come back to this board for action, and hasn't been an action of that committee. But in the future, it may, and that's going to be a constantly thing that we'll have to work with, and I just want to make sure that was out there on the record.
I'll keep my comments brief. Reason Farms wasn't mentioned, and there is a representative from the City of Roseville, Mark. We had that discussion at the Board of Committee meeting last week, right? And we clearly explained to staff at that meeting that when Reason Farms is actually annexed into the City of Roseville, it will turn gray. So I would assume, because you didn't get up to say something, you understood that. As far as the 960 and any other property disputes like that, obviously, the ad hoc committee will continue working through those, and I would encourage us to refine this, make it the best we can, and, you know, if it requires, whatever it may require is whatever it's going to require, but you guys have done a stellar job to this point. I have every bit of confidence that it will continue. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion, I guess.
I'd be happy to make a motion. You guys believe it on your side.
I move that we adopt staff recommendations one through six, with the modification to four being that we have staff review and bring back options as it relates to including District Five into Phase One of the Conservation Plan, and have that be done in consideration of the time constraints to Phase One of the Conservation Plan.
Seconding the motion.
In fact, I could just, under discussion, make one comment. I think, you know, what we hopefully are about to embark on is really a general plan for conservation and preservation and enhancement of open space, and so as we go through that process, again, what we're going to attempt to do is balance conservation with urban planning, and it's really that simple, and the outcome is going to be so much better than the status quo. So I just encourage everybody to stay involved and continue to contact us. It's going to be important that we have that ongoing dialogue to make sure that the outcome is optimal.
I do miss the purple. Really do.
I do.
Jim, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, it's been said before, but I just want to personally thank the hard work that the committee's done. Supervisor Wiegand, you're a visionary leadership in this thing from the start, without getting too much gray hair, is very much appreciated. And Supervisor Euler, your ability to understand the Placer County Conservation Plan from a development perspective and bring the development community in, and to bring their buy-in into it, was critical to us moving forward with this. So I just publicly wanted to thank you both for the hard work that you've done, as well as Lauren and the staff.
And we know you've been highly compensated, so...
Right.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I just had one very quick comment, sorry, as well. I also wanted to thank Robert and Kirk specifically. I was actually at that December 2006 meeting, and I believe it was 2006. It's one of the reasons that I'm here today, is because it gave me an insight into what opportunities being in an elected position offers to our county, and ways that we can serve our county. And I'm frankly honored and astonished by how much time you guys have put into this process, which is really serving the county, and I think that's something that sometimes gets forgotten in the discussion of conservation versus development. This is about serving the county of Placer and the people who live and work and recreate here, and I just really wanted to make sure that that point got across, that I'm just absolutely impressed by how much time and effort you put into this for something that is just so much bigger than you are. So, thank you.
All right, now I'll bring it back to you. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? I opposed? Thank you. Now, are we going to take a break until 1:00? Eight to nine?
Well, we have some remaining items that we have to do.
Should we finish those?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and probably see a pillant to move for about a half hour.
Okay. So now we're going to move to item number eight, then, correct?
Yes. For your board's purposes, item number eight. We're expecting eight, nine, 10 to go rather rapidly in terms of quick staff presentations, so if you would please come forward, Mr. Snyder.
That was a hint. So...
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Snyder, Office of Economic Development. The department item before you this afternoon is to adopt a resolution designating Placer County as a federal recovery zone pursuant to the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, ARA, of 2009, for the purposes of issuing bonds in those amounts that you see before you. Therefore, to date, we have attracted between $11 and $12 million in stimulus money. Part of that is in the application process. This afternoon, we have another opportunity to attract additional ARA funding, and this is something that came out of the U.S. Treasury back in June, as far as guidelines and guidance are concerned. We have an in-house team looking at both types of bonds. There's a private piece and a public piece. The private piece is similar to private activity bonds that are issued on a regular basis by authorities throughout the state and country. The public piece is an infrastructure piece for public works, public facilities, those types of things. So again, we have an internal team looking at those and deciphering how best to move forward with specific projects, and we'll come back to you once we have identified those. Placer County qualifies as a recovery zone, so by designating Placer County a recovery zone today, we'll take the first step in utilizing this program. The City of Roseville is the only community within Placer County that has received an allocation. They also received about slightly over $5 million for, again, two pieces of those bond programs. It's important to mention that cities and counties that don't utilize their funds will be asked to release those funds back into the larger pool, and that allocation will go to other communities around the state that did not initially qualify. So with that, I would ask the board to adopt the resolution before you today to declare Placer County a federal recovery zone. Again, the designation itself does not obligate the county financially in any way, and I am available to answer any questions.
Does anybody in the audience wish to make a comment on this item? See, now, I'll bring you back to the board for action. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We'll take your money.
Thank you.
Now, we are going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority and take up item number nine. Well, you've been very patient with us. You've been here a long time.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am Elvin Lewis, Director for the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority. I'm here for two items today. The first item is to ask you to approve the public authority budget as presented in your packet. I'm available for any questions you might have on that.
Any questions on that? See, amen. Do we make a motion to do that first? Anybody in the public, in the audience wish to make a comment on this item? See, now, I'll bring you back for a motion.
With approval of item nine, item ninety?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now...
Thank you very much. The second item is a resolution proclaiming the week of November 16th through 20th as Placer County IHSS Caregiver Recognition Week.
That's a good job. Any comment? See, now, do you have a motion?
No.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Now, we will adjourn as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and take up items A and B. Mr. Grimm.
Yeah, good afternoon, Chairman and Board Members. My name's Ken Grimm with the Department of Public Works. No actions required on this next item, but we just want to notify you of an upgrade in our flood insurance rating through our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, known as the NFIP. The NFIP promotes policies and practices that minimizes flood losses, promotes the availability of flood insurance, and also facilitates accurate rating, insurance rating of properties. One of those elements is the community rating system. It's a voluntary incentive program by which counties can improve, do more than the minimum that's required, in exchange for that... do more than the minimum that's required. In exchange for that, our citizens get the benefit of having lower flood insurance rates. Four categories were rated on: public information, mapping and regulation, flood damage reduction, and flood preparedness. You get a score from one to 10, 10 being the base. Anything below that is better. We are now being rated a number five. In the past, we've been sixes and eights. That five will put us in the top 4% of programs in the nation, and those are only of the communities that actually participate in the program. There's a little over 1,000 of those. To give you what that really means to folks, in 2007, the county had 569 policyholders representing $300,000 in premiums. About 200 of those were in the special flood hazard area, those areas most prone to flooding. $155,000 in premiums to meet those. Because of this, they'll save approximately $40,000 in premium. That's an average $200 in savings for each and every policyholder that has flood insurance. So very significant savings. That represents 25% due to this program. I'd just like to take a moment to recognize Janelle Heinzler and her supervisor, Wes Dicker. You know them from engineering, surveying, actually in SEDRA. Janelle is our floodplain manager. It's her hard work that actually made this happen, and hopefully in a continuing trend. And so I'd just like to recognize her and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you for the hard work.
Then the second item, Tahoe City Transit Center. We're asking today that you reject all bids associated with the Tahoe City Transit Center, and we authorize the Public Works to readvertise the project. The Tahoe City Transit Center is an intermodal transit center near the intersection of State Route 89 and 28. Will provide a safe, covered facility for patrons of our system down there, also providing some parking. Bids were opened on September 11th. To keep it short, there were some mathematical errors associated with that bid. At this point in time, we have two options. One is to go to the lowest responsible bidder, who appears to maybe have been the second low bidder at the time, or rebid the project. We believe by rebidding the project, we have the opportunity to save some money. We believe that's in the best interest of the taxpayer, and so we're asking you for that authorization. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you need an action on that?
Yes. Basically, there is rejecting all the bids for the Tahoe City Transit Center and authorizing Public Works to readvertise.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this item? I think with the exception of Mr. Nader there, I think everybody is staff. I'll bring it back to the Board.
I would like to make that we adopt a resolution rejecting... All bids received for the Tahoe City Transit Center project under construction contract number 1070, and further, we authorize Public Works to readvertise for bids under construction contract number 1085.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good job. I think by rebidding it is the best way to go. Thank you.
Forward, and I'll go back to closed session.
Let's go.
And take up the one remaining item, and then it's closed session on page four. It's Labor. The Board is scheduled to come back at 1:00 for a continuation of the hearing. It started July 20th on the Exclusive Resorts Appeal that has been requested to be closed by the taxpayer, and hopefully we'll be back soon.
All right.